Good evening and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for Tuesday, May 13th. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call?
Anne Mayer, SAU 50 representative.
Here.
Kent LaPage.
Here.
Dexter Legg.
Here.
Rebecca Emerson.
Here.
Sheri Ham-Garretti.
Here.
Steve Bartlett, business administrator.
Here.
Brendan Restano, vice chair.
Here.
Dr. Mitch Childman, chair.
Here.
Jean Frisbee, recording secretary.
Here.
Steve Zadovic, assistant superintendent.
Here.
Ian Walker.
Here.
Lisa Sweet.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Abby Rockefeller.
Here.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the superintendent for a second.
Before we do the pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silent reflection, we'd like to remember this evening Harold Eckert. Mr. Eckert was here last night and became ill at city council meeting. We wish Mr. Eckert and his family well. We'd also like to acknowledge Jim Johnston, one of the teachers at the high school who lost his mother this week. We'd like to remember all the victims in the world who are experiencing life with hurricanes, cyclones, and earthquakes, realizing how important we are in Portsmouth, that we will go home to our homes this evening and they're intact. And we'd like to welcome Abby Rockefeller back, student representative, from her recent injury. We're glad to have her back.
Thank you. We can rise for a moment of reflection and then pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from last time?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion about the minutes, corrections, alterations, take backs? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. If I could ask the superintendent to walk us through some of the communications we have this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several communications. The first is a letter from Mr. Peter Smith, who's the principal of Greenland Central School, who wanted to thank us for all of our assistance during a recent student incident that they had. Our council has responded to the town of Greenland. Secondly, there's an email correspondence from attorney Robert Sullivan, who's here this evening and will be discussing email correspondence with the board and elected officials later in the agenda. There is a thank you letter from Portsmouth Middle School thanking the high school for recent renovations, the kitchen area. There is a letter from SAU 50 supporting the school budget request for the Portsmouth School Board for 2009 with the city council. There is a letter from Ms. Maxine Feintuck talking about her daughter, who had a wonderful time on the Mexico trip recently. There is also an elementary school menu. There is a letter that I have sent to Mr. Bohenko regarding quarterly communications with the city council regarding educational issues. And there is a packet regarding the task force on special education, which is developed from the board retreat last February. We'll report on that later, but we have had at least one meeting of the task force and we're moving ahead. In addition, in your packets in front of you, there were several other items. One is a copy of a packet that Mr. Bartlett and I sent to the city council today with Mr. John Bohenko regarding questions and inquiries the city council had with us when we had our work session. That's in this packet? That's in this paper. The maroon packet. Okay. Maroon packet.
Excellent.
There is also a newsletter from Portsmouth High School, from the clippership. There is also a newsletter from Little Harbor School, Harbor Lights. And finally, an invitation from Water Country and every year, and I'm glad we're on television to be able to thank this company for allowing all city employees a day, June 14th, from 11:30 to 6:00, to be able to go to Water Country at no cost and participate in just a fun day at Water Country. So we appreciate them doing this for all the city employees. So that's also in there. And that's what we have for communications, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. If we could move on to section two and do a recognition of staff and students. So first up is Attorney Robert Duchamp about the education endowment.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, Mr. Duchamp is a social studies teacher at the high school, also an attorney. We're glad to have him at the high school. And he has had this idea to work with students to develop an educational endowment. He and I have had several discussions about this, and I know he's worked very hard with the staff at the high school and other attorneys in the city. And I'd just like to welcome him to the podium, and I know that he'd like to make a brief presentation about the status of his endowment.
Yes, but first I have to correct you. Thank you. First of all, my name's Robert Duchamp. I teach social studies at your high school, my high school. I also work with Mary Carrie Foley, who's the student council advisor. But it's really not my idea. The student, you should know, this may be one of those moments that five, maybe even 10 years from now, that hopefully you'll remember this night. This is the first time that we've talked about this publicly. We went to the student council last fall and said, geez, you know, you can be student councils like you have been in the past. You can have great proms. You can do fundraising for athletic teams. You can do a variety of things. They chose to go to do that and to take things, what they're trying to do is take things to a different level. They've done research on their own, and they have found out that lots of high schools, not public high schools, some down south, none up here, have endowments. And so what they decided was, the 40 student counselors have been working unbelievably hard since last October to come up with an endowment program where they're just about ready to unveil it. You're the first to hear about it publicly, and you're not going to get the official unveiling, because that will be for the students. What I can tell you is that they have coordinated things with the city attorney. The trust documents are in the works. Their webpage is almost done. They have brochures that are ready to go out. They have thank you committees that have letters drafted to go out to people that are contributing. They have set up a board that is in the trust documents. And perhaps the best thing is what they want to do with it. They really want it as in to create a different culture in the school. You know, they wanted to have a different kind of school, a different kind of Portsmouth High School, a different kind of, excuse me, a different kind of student council and a different kind of student body, where they want to do enrichment programs, for instance. You teach, you've approved programs where they now teach, for instance, Chinese at the high school. Their idea is, well, why not have an exchange program with China, where they can actually go and become enveloped in the culture there for a while, for two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, whatever. Why not have something where we would have the money to bring in guest speakers, guest lecturers? For instance, the Rachels Challenge speaker that we had, the brother Rachel who came in, it's already started to change the culture at the high school in a really positive way. And you can see that, and you can feel it, and you can sense it. And they thought this would be a great idea to have the funds to do that type of thing without having to affect the school board's budget, and so on and so forth. Other things such as speakers at commencement. Geez, wouldn't it be great if you get enough money over time to have a senator come in, to have an ambassador come in, to have a former president come in. Things to take the high school to a level that you see in some private high schools, but if it's good enough for a private high school, their thought is, why isn't it good enough for us? And they want it to be that way. So perhaps the most impressive thing from my perspective is that they realize that when they start this, they're not going to see any immediate results. And so for high school students that we have all heard criticisms in the past of teenagers being incredibly self-centered, they said, you know, we may not see a return on this for five, seven, eight, 10 years, until there's a return on the money that they're about to go forward and start raising. And they've worked so incredibly hard since last October to do it anyway. So you have seniors that are graduating that will get credit for having had this idea, led by Kristen Scott, the student council president who's here tonight, that they realize they're not going to see anything. They'll start donations, but the freshmen that are, the ones that are freshmen now may not see a return for five to seven years. And it's just, you should know that it's been so impressive to work with people like Abby and others that have put so much time into this since last October. And we just wanted to give you that little preview. We'll be going to city council after that. And then we're waiting to hear back from Mr. Collins juggling everybody's schedules, which you can imagine what that's like with teachers to try and have an assembly to give the PowerPoint to the students first. And then they've got cold calling committee set up, phone-a-thon committee set up, and they really want to go for it. So we hope you get your support. It's a wonderful thing your students are doing.
Thank you.
Any quick questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Very, very cool.
If we could move on to issues of personnel?
Thank you. We have four retirements to make you aware of this evening. Back a few meetings ago, we read through a list of a number of retirements, and these are retirements that have been announced since that time. First of all, we have the retirement of Joanne Dodge, who are computer integrator teacher at Portsmouth High School. Jo will be completing two years with the Portsmouth School Department. She has been a computer integrator teacher at Portsmouth High School. We have the retirement of Cindy Whitney, resource room teacher at Little Harbor School. Cindy will be completing eight years with the Portsmouth School Department. She has been a resource room teacher at Little Harbor School. And we have the retirement of Mary Carrie Foley, English teacher, Portsmouth High School. Mary will be completing 30 years with the Portsmouth School Department. She has been an English teacher at Portsmouth High School all 30 years. And finally, we have the retirement of Robin Burdick, the principal at Little Harbor School. She's announcing her retirement for the end of next year, not the end of this year, the end of next year, June 2009, but announcing that retirement with us. And everyone who knows Robin knows that she's led Little Harbor School for some time with tremendous heart and vision.
I have a motion to accept the-
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
And we have two requests for leave of absence for you this evening. The first is Dana Gray, social studies teacher at Portsmouth High School. Dana is requesting a leave of absence for the 2008-2009 school year. She has been on leave of absence the second semester of the 2007-2008 school year after she delivered her twin boys. Dana was hired in 2004.
Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the second request for leave of absence is that of Deborah Miller, French teacher at Portsmouth High School. Deborah is requesting a leave of absence for the 2008-2009 school year. She's expecting her first child. Deborah was hired in 2003. She will complete five years with the Portsmouth School Department.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the second request for leave of absence is that of Deborah Miller, French teacher at Portsmouth High School. Deborah is requesting a leave of absence for the 2008-2009 school year. She's expecting her first child. Deborah was hired in 2003. She will complete five years with the Portsmouth School Department.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that it? Thank you. I'd like to move on now to voting on the superintendent's contract to extend for one year. We have a motion on the table. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Oh, sorry, roll call.
Regarding the superintendent's contract, Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Dexter Legg?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Sheri Ham-Garretti?
Yes.
Brendan Restano?
Yes.
Ian Walker?
Yes.
Lisa Sweet?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Mitch Childman?
Yes.
Any?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I just say thank you to the board members? I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything else under personnel?
No.
Okay. If we could move on to financials, Steve Bartlett?
Yeah, I think we have public commentary first?
No.
Okay, what, excuse me, what do you have in your package? The month-end financial report for March of this year, because we did not have a second meeting in April. And going through this, it's tracking as we predicted. We're seeing a good deal of pressure on transportation as we have homeless transportation that we had not anticipated. So I'm trying to come up with a good analysis for that. We still are going to see some of our anticipated savings in some of the energy costs. However, that'll be offset by some overruns in the maintenance budget due to some unforeseen repairs and work that needs to be done for some inspections, especially on the middle school. A couple of systems failed, which we hadn't planned on. In terms of the 207 budget, my estimates from the month before about the revenue shortfall still hold, so there will need to be some support from the general fund to help cost center 207 come out even at the end of the year. At the May 27th meeting, we'll have the month ending April, so that'll give us three full quarters and some projections for May and beyond for the rest of the year.
Can you just refresh my memory on your estimate on the 207 shortfall?
The 207 shortfall is going to, based on the shortfalls in the tuition revenue, I anticipated that we were about $180,000 short. And we had previously trimmed as many expenses as possible. We're still trying to do that through the rest of the year by, you know, doubling up as much as we can. But it's still going to require some general fund support in order to have it come out. We will, of course, offset the need for that support with a small fund balance in that particular cost center, which we had at the end of last year, in the vicinity of about $24,000, so.
Thank you. Sheri?
I know, I believe I've asked before about the school board and us being over, and I believe it was either legal services or something else. And I didn't know if that has still continued to grow, or if we still expect to have more issues associated with that and the costs to still continue, or are we kind of all squared away?
I'm pretty sure that that particular aspect of the budget for the school board budget, I think, is okay. So we should be pretty stable in the school board budget at this stage of the game.
Okay. And 104 under the tutor, it says 207 percent. Is that correct? And is that expected to change in any way?
The only reason that that's there is just, that's a classification of where we ended up having tutors and pairs and everything else floating around. As you recall in the last budget discussion, we have to move the staff around throughout the year in order to keep up with the needs of the students as they change. So therefore, we don't always guess right nine months or a year before as to where we have everything. So what will happen is, we will basically try to net out the, all the overs and unders in each of the individual cost centers for each of the individual employment categories. Because during the year, you know, again, we plan for hiring, filling positions at certain levels, and some come in higher and some come in lower. So it's pretty much a goal of netting out benefits, netting out salaries in total because of the way we have to switch stuff around.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Two quick questions. So we should expect to see the new format that we had talked about starting July?
July, that's correct.
And will we continue to see the 207 report pages that you-
Yes, we're going to do is, what I'll do is I will expand the reporting to include at least 207. And perhaps if you'd like, I can just add on the past program on the bottom as well.
The way you would be doing it.
The way I had started off doing it before, right? And we'll just try to do it in the same format, the new format. We'll just add it to the bottom.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay.
But will we see the past accounts before July, like you've been giving us to-
Yes.
Yeah.
On the May 27th meeting, I'll get you three quarters of those. Yes.
Very good. Any other comments or questions to Steve about money? Okay. Thank you. If we could open up now for a public commentary session? Does anybody sign the sheet?
Yes, we do have one person.
You have a sheet? Okay. If you're the only one, we'll give you 30 minutes. No, I'm just kidding.
I need more than a couple minutes.
Just state your name and where you live. Thank you.
I'm Rachel Josephs from Rye, New Hampshire. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am here on behalf of EF, which stands for Education First. I'm coming from a nonprofit organization based in Cambridge, Massachusetts, that is dedicated to international study. And we are bringing a group of 150 foreign exchange students to the seacoast area this summer. They are coming from France, Spain, Switzerland, Russia, Hong Kong, and Taiwan. And they are coming to experience American life by living with a host family and also to study English. These students already have some level of English, but they will be taking classes in the mornings, Monday through Friday, at the Portsmouth Christian Academy in Dover, where we have rented some space, and then partaking in educational afternoon activities with us in the afternoons. And I'm here to get the word out about this program, because we are looking currently for volunteer host families to house the students. This is the third year in the area, and I'm very excited to work with it. Just so that you all know a little bit about myself, I'm a student from Rye. I graduated from Rye Elementary and Rye Junior High. And then I went on to Phillips Exeter, where I had the opportunity to study abroad myself in Mexico. And that really changed the direction of my life. I then became a Spanish major in college, studied Spanish and international relations, and then became a Spanish teacher, which is what I currently do, except that I then moved to Mexico and lived in Mexico for the last two and a half years. So I really am dedicated and excited about international education, because it's had such an important impact on my own life. And I think that it's a great opportunity for the Portsmouth families to bring the world into their own homes for this summer. If you can't make a trip abroad, you can at least bring the world to you and to your children by doing this. And it's a great opportunity to expand global understanding, share our culture, and maybe change some perceptions about Americans in the United States. The program is July 9th through August 4th. The students are 13 to 18 years old, and they come fully insured. They also come with two to three adults from their country that can act as translators in case of an emergency. And we are also looking for host families for those adults. So if anyone is interested in someone a little more independent, we have that option as well. I have a letter and calendar that I would like to distribute to you. And I've spoken with Dr. Lister already and gotten permission to send out some information through the distribution lists at Portsmouth High School, Portsmouth Middle School, and the elementary schools. So I hope that everyone can help me to get the word out, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you.
Thank you. Pass that out?
Thanks, Rachel.
Does anybody have any quick questions? Even though it is public commentary, it's a nice idea.
This is great.
Anyone else interested in speaking? Are the floors open? Sure. Yes, come up and introduce yourself. Tell us where you live.
I didn't have a grumpy old dog. Doesn't like anybody.
Good evening. My name is Emily Healy. I'm a third grade teacher at Dondaro School, as well as a resident here in Portsmouth. This is my third year teaching in Portsmouth. I'm here to invite you to our Science Day this Friday, May 16th. It's all day from 9:00 to 3:00. There's been a lot of collaborative effort around creating this day of learning, and we welcome the opportunity to share it with you. We have members of the Blue Whale Society who are bringing a life-size blow-up whale. The kids will be entering through to learn about the whale. We have two meteorologists joining us. We have a few professors from UNH to talk about sea life. We have an energy efficient- sea life. We have an energy-efficient car arriving to our school. We have representatives from the Seacoast Science Center and, as well as a beekeeper. So it's a fun and exciting day of learning, and we hope that you can share it with us. Our door is always open to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, public commentary period is closed. If I can entertain a motion from Kent for a second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend, because we've got at least one employee that needs to go back to work and a couple of people that would like to stand up to the mic and read, guys, to item 5DA only, not 5DB. We'll hold that off.
To move that up?
To move that up at this time.
Finally, the chair. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, school board. I'd like to first of all introduce two individuals here that are representing approximately 20 other individuals that are working on a project to keep memories of a dear friend of ours, Patty Wodgner. To my right is her brother, Richard. Richard is a custodian at the Don Darrow School and lifelong friend of Patty and the school system. To my left is Kathy Ananhea, graduate of Portsmouth High School, a employee of the Portsmouth High School system, and a lifetime friend of the children to the city of Portsmouth. Can I allow them both to speak in a minute? We're here for one request and one informational item. Back in March, shortly thereafter of the death of Patty, which took us all by shock, a discussion became very heavy in regards what we could do to keep Patty's memory alive. Any individual who has had over 35 years of life in the school system, none of you would be doing some of the work that we are doing at this time without this amazing woman. Patty always signed her memos, P-A-W at the end, if you ever saw that. Well, it took me a long time, and there'd always be a paw print on that. Took me a long time to realize what P-A-W stood for, and she was giving herself a little credit, and she never did that, but I know what it stood for, finally. It was Pretty Amazing Women. Anybody who knows this secretarial and clerical group that works for our school system knows that nothing gets done. Our administrators can be the best damn things we have, but if they don't have a good clerical, nothing gets out to the public, and they do an outstanding job. To talk about real briefly, and then I'll allow both Kathy and Richard to speak briefly. There are two things that are going on. One that does not currently involve the school board, but we will keep your abreast. We are putting together a certificate scholarship. This is a totally different type of scholarship. Patty never attended formal education after high school. She came from our secretarial school at Portsmouth High School 35 years ago, hired by Tim Monahan. She came right into work and never missed a heartbeat, working for some very tough gentlemen and one tough lady to make sure that the Portsmouth school system stayed going. Patty worked day and night. So this scholarship certificate program is not necessarily academic. It is going to be recognized, and we're putting it together with Kathleen Dwyer, and we will have a certificate given out this year, at this year's graduation, for an outstanding student who works behind the scenes that may not be going on to further education, but has an interest in that of administrative assistant and/or clerical-type work. The second thing, we do need some approval from the school board. There's a small patch of land as you walk into the Portsmouth Central Office, backside of Little Harbor. There's a little area that we wish this group to take time and relax. A bench has already been ordered, and we're looking to ask for the school board to dedicate a small portion of land, no bigger than about 10 by 5, to put a bench on and a couple of trees and rose bushes that will be known as Patty's Place. And it would be as you walk in, and again, we're not looking for anything too elaborate because Patty would be embarrassed with any of this that's going on tonight. So we're looking to honor Patty, to have people realize that we care about our individuals that come in and work for us day and night. It is a very tough thing for me because Patty became a very close friend to myself and the family over the years, and she was just an amazing person. I'll hand the mic over to Kathy and then Richard.
Thank you. It was very well said. We'd really love to honor our good friend Patty and another play on her, P-A-W-S, a place to pause and reflect. She was a beautiful person, and this location is a beautiful place to sit, and, you know, we hope we have your blessing to be able to do this, and of course, there'll be a few cat statues as well because she loved her kitties so much. So we, we hope to have your blessing to have this little place to honor our good friend. We miss her very much. Thank you very much.
Sir, brother Richard?
Yes. Good evening. A little nervous here. Usually watching you people on TV instead. Very honored to speak in front of you, especially on this occasion. Longtime sister and best friend, and I know as the others have spoken that what we're trying to do, she would be very embarrassed, but at the same time, very honored and proud that this is being thought of in her honor. And as you all know, I'm Rick Wodgner, but commonly known as Patty's older brother in the city, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
So at this time, this group of approximately 20 would request that this small portion of the school property be named in honor of Patty, but not just for Patty, because again, as Richard just said, it's a matter of just recognizing, taking time. The space already exists, and it is not a very elaborate piece of architects or anything. In fact, we predict we could probably get it done in about four hours' workman's time. We thank you, and we give you the request formally. Have a great night. Yes?
Could you just re-explain where this is?
As you, and I didn't know this until some people went out and measured it, that you could actually wear, there's a round rail fence as you walk up to Central Office on your left-hand side, normally right where they dump the snow, about eight feet or two lengths. Bob, is that about correct? There's, we, Kenny Lynch, he says it's very easy to put an opening right there where there'd be a stone or brick pad put along with a bench and then a tree on each side, and as Kathy said, there'd be a cattletune that might be of ceramic type, I guess. They actually look pretty real in all honesty. Any other questions in regards to?
Questions? Is that something we want to have as a motion?
And I think we want to recognize Jean Frisbee in a lot of this. She's been keeping the correspondence going, and we appreciate that, Jean.
I would move that we approve the idea of having this place, Patty's Place.
Second? Second. Okay, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Upstain. Thank you very much.
Right ahead.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving back in order, so I would now like to invite JCJ Architects and Distefano Architects to come up and present to us what you found. If I could just take a moment to introduce who our speakers are for people who don't know. Mr. James Lapasta and Doug Roberts of JCJ Architects, and Lisa Distefano handing out the papers.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you. We have a very brief presentation this evening. Tonight, we are going to start a more formalized discussion about the program. Program being a listing of spaces for the middle school. We've given you some fairly dense spreadsheets. We're not going to go through those line by line. I'm going to hit some of the highlights of them. We can certainly entertain questions, and then we're going to suggest that perhaps we talk about them over the next two weeks and that you take them up at your next meeting, because we certainly don't expect, never expect, to bring you information in one evening and then ask you to act on it, especially something as important as this.
Thank you.
So we want to share the information this evening, and then certainly at the discretion of the board, would be willing to hold a workshop session with you and then move to approvals at some future date.
Mm-hmm.
On with the presentation. What we're going to talk about tonight briefly is an overview of where we've been. Just to refresh the folks who may not have been very close to it, we're going to talk a little bit about your state's space standards and what those are and what they aren't and how they may impact work at the middle school. We've needed to make, as a result of all of our work, some assumptions about the program that begin to drive numbers and ultimately the size of the school. We're going to share with you two program options, and as you will discover when we get into it, and inevitably in this process, there will be options within options within options, but we've tried to kind of bracket both ends of the spectrum for the initial discussion, and then talk a little bit at the end about what some of the waivers that you may need from the New Hampshire Department of Education may be, maybe, as we move forward, depending on where we end up. So to talk briefly about where we have been, we've been quite a few places in the last six weeks or so since we started. We certainly have done some very basic groundwork with you, with the staff, with others, in terms of looking at the space standards. We have been over to meet with the Department of Education in person to talk about this project and what the, you know, what we can and can't do and what would be acceptable. We've met with city staff to talk about the site, to talk about their thoughts about it. I mean, we think it's important to kind of get everybody's ideas on the table. We've certainly reviewed the previous program. We've been to the school, crawled all over the place. We've measured the existing rooms to understand how big some of the current spaces are as we move into new spaces. We spent three very intense and very productive days with the faculty and staff in an interview process to elicit from them their thoughts about the school in terms of the kinds of spaces and what the program is in terms of a middle school program in Portsmouth. While middle school programs are similar around the country, there are some very specific things about how you set your teams up and how you approach education that we wanted to make sure we, we had a handle on. Last week, we conducted a community workshop, offered twice in this room. Many of you were there. Thank you. You can draw your own conclusions. We found them very useful and very helpful in terms of getting information and having a chance to, more importantly, share information with the community. We have reviewed internally a set of programming assumptions that we'll share with you this evening, and then we have developed two program options, and naming options is always dangerous because words are very powerful things, and so I will explain them. We have what's called a full program and a full program with reduced building core. I would emphasize, and I will reemphasize, that both programs we're going to share with you tonight are full programs. They support a full middle school. They simply give you options in terms of how you might provide that and the kind of space. So they are full middle school options that we believe support your full middle school program, but we had to name them something, and we tried to differentiate. So we'll, that's the best we could come up with, and I just want to make sure you understand that, that we don't believe there's anything about the second option that would be diminishing of education. So to talk very briefly about what we've found, and there are certain requirements, and then there are recommendations, and these are some of the requirements. I won't go through them in great detail. I think the single biggest one for us to focus on would be, as many of you know, that this requirement of 36 square feet per student or a minimum of 900 square feet for a general-purpose classroom. Your classrooms right now in the existing middle school range from 600 to maybe 670, depending on the room, and they're all different shapes and sizes, so your rooms are, you know, about two-thirds of the required size as they currently stand. So that, to give you some sense of where we're headed. Science labs, they recommend 45 square feet per student or a minimum of 900, and a classroom lab at about 1,200 square feet, and as we go down, you can see some of the other requirements, and you have access to all these. I just simply want to point out that these requirements are things that we need to look at, certainly very carefully. Administrative and teaching space of 64 square feet per teacher, but that can be accounted for in the classroom, although in the middle school it often isn't. Parking for 100% of the faculty and staff, and of course, the statistic we've all talked about, I think since we were interviewed, which is the size of the site that's required of 17 acres. In addition to the requirements, there are a series of recommendations in the code that don't have the force of law, but certainly have the force of good practice. And there, these are some of the recommendations in terms of space for art of a minimum of a 1,200-square-foot room, instrumental and choral music. These are certainly minimums. I think your music program at the middle school, as we'll talk about in a few minutes, certainly the need probably far exceeds the minimum recommendations of the state. For physical education, their recommendation is 125 square feet per student or a minimum of 3,800. Just to put that in perspective, 3,800 square feet is about a half a high school gym, a single basketball court, just to give you some kind of order of magnitude of how big that really is. There are requirements for tech ed, family and computer science, and computer laboratory spaces. So those, that was some of the background. I wanted to go through it kind of quickly. You've all got access to those. So let's get into the meat of it, which is the programming assumptions, and there's some key things here about programming for middle school. If we were to talk about an elementary school, we build the program and the capacity, the number of students in an elementary school, really built around the classroom. The building block of an elementary school, if you think about it, is the individual classroom where the teacher teaches. It's fairly self-contained, and if you decide the capacity of the building by simply adding up the number of 24 student classrooms you have, and then you support that space. If you're talking about a high school, it would be a little different typically, not completely, but typically, high schools are generally built around department structure. Math department, social studies department, English department, and you generally work on a utilization rate, and you work on building high school capacity around departments, and classrooms are utilized in a very different way than at the elementary school where, you know, Mrs. Jones' classroom is Mrs. Jones' classroom and nobody else uses it. The high school tends to be a little more utilized. The thing that we're going to deal with and talk about tonight is that middle schools are fundamentally built around a team. Your middle school is built around the team concept. Middle schools around the country are built around the team, and the key at getting at how many students the school can support really gets down to looking at the team, the size of the team and the number of students you want to accommodate in a team. So we're going to shift the discussion for the remainder of the evening and probably talk a lot about your teams, because it really becomes the fundamental building block of a middle school. I think even the literature we were sent early on talked about that being at the heart of your middle school, and as I recall at the interview, we were asked what we thought the heart of a middle school was, and certainly it is the team, and that came across loud and clear when we met with your staff, and it also came up, I think, in the workshops. So what is your team right now, and what's it going to look like most likely in the future? Well, right now, your typical team is three classrooms, which are shared by, which have various academic structures in them. There's one science classroom lab that's needed, and it needs to be in the team as well. There's a special education area or room. There really ought to be a team breakout area, which is a space for the team to get together in informal ways, and we talked a little bit about that at the workshop. Call it a collaboration breakout area. It's a place that centers the team. There really should be some kind of collaboration room for the faculty to get together and do joint planning, and that can be its own room, or it can be just a classroom, and there's different ways to accommodate that, but that function should be accommodated. And each team really also has to have its own bathrooms, its own storage area, some support space, and possibly a conferencing area. And that's really fundamentally what the team is. And the way we begin to look at middle schools is how many of these teams do you need to support your population inversely, once you've built the team based on your structure? How many students will those support? So right now, and certainly looking towards the future as we see it, talking to you, you really have two teams per grade, and our assumption was that you would continue to have two teams per grade, so that's a total of six teams. What that means is in the sixth grade, you would end up with 10 classrooms if you do the math, but in the seventh and eighth grade, there is an extra classroom per grade level based on the way you currently structure English. There's, it's a shared classroom between the two teams because of the way that the classes work. So you have potentially 11 seventh grade and 11 eighth grade classrooms, and that gives you your total. So we look at the team structure. We look at how many teams you have, how many classrooms that begins to generate. And then lastly, and certainly very importantly, we look at the number of students you expect to have as a class size, and of course, this is a board policy decision, but as we understand it right now from the information we have, is that your range by your teacher contract is 24 to 27 students per classroom was, were the numbers, and certainly any of these assumptions, they're just assumptions. We'd be willing to certainly revisit. The one difference is we would recommend, the state recommends, the National Science Teachers Association recommends, no more than 24 students in a science lab. That's a safety issue. So that, it makes the math a little bit harder to do, but when you look at that, 24 becomes the maximum number when you can actually get into a laboratory situation. So we needed to go through, we needed to make a series of assumptions, and like any other exercise... And like any other exercise like this, if we change our assumptions, the outcome will change. So we wanted to share these assumptions with you and we'll be providing this to Mr. Bartlett. So you'll have access to, to this as well if you want to. We didn't, we didn't bring copies, hard copies. So what does that really mean? Okay, so we've, we've talked about some of our assumptions. What does that mean if we begin to look at the capacity of a school building? Well, one of the things we want to talk about here is that the capacity of the school is really a range. A building can operate successfully within a fairly wide range of students if you design it the right way. It's not a 650 student school or a 550 student school or a 750 student school. It's a school that will accommodate properly designed a range of students and, and still give you the educational program you need. So right now, if we take a look at those previous assumptions of two, you know, well, the ones I just went through, you know, of two, two teams per, per grade level for a total of six teams, and we look at your class size guidelines or your, your contractual guidelines, and we look at the state and we mix it all together, we can come up with a, a population and a capacity that hovers frankly, right around the ranges we've, we've looked at in terms of, of your, thinking about your, your population. So again, if you look at a minimum class size, if, if every class had 24 students, if you hit the minimum of 24 students per room, then, then that number of team areas would, would generate a school of about 636 students about. And that's a pretty exact number, but you do the math, that's what you come out with. On the high end, if every classroom were running at its maximum, contract maximum of 27 students per class, except for the labs, which would have 24 students in them, then you would end up with a school size of 696 students. The same physical square footage can accommodate that range of students if we think about how we plan for it. The one thing I would mention is, you know, we, we talk about teams as the building block. I think at a middle school, what you really have to look at if you want to increase or decrease the capacity is adding a team or subtracting a team. Unless you want to really fundamentally rethink how you're delivering middle school education. So this is a six-team school. A five-team school would be 530 to 580, I think is the range. And a seven-team school would be up close to 800 on the upside if you added a seventh team. So we've been focusing on a, on a six-team school. So in, in the first option that we put together for this capacity, and actually in both, both options, we're suggesting that you size the core for the higher end. Now, would it have to be completely up to the 696? Probably not. And we can, that's part of the discussion we're going to have to have. But if you size the core for the higher number, the program in front of you, and actually, let me, let me back up. The page that you have in front of you, I should have commented on that and I apologize because this references it. If you look at the document in front of you, the far left column, which, what we did was we took the, we took the New Hampshire guidelines, the, the total square footage that you would be allowed, and we frankly back-solutioned a school out of that. It's a, it's a hypothetical, but it, it shows you the things you probably can't, can't have, but it totals the absolute, you know, number. And that's, so we, we thought that was a good baseline to take a look at so we could understand as you move forward, if you, if you hit the New Hampshire guideline exactly what you would have. And you'll see some blanks in there as you look down the list. And those blanks were areas where we said, okay, well, that doesn't fit in that number. You know, you might decide to rearrange that list, but at the end of the day, the numbers have to total to that bottom line, bottom line number. The second column that's in gray, that, that doesn't total to anything. That is a compilation of the rooms and suggested areas that we got out of the workshop process and out of the interview process. We then took that information and if you look at option one, that's what I'm going to talk about now. Then option two, the far right column will be the next option we go through. And then if you look all the way to the right in the remarks column, what we've done there is tried to highlight the differences between the two options, between option one and option two, as you go through that. So there'll be little notes and I apologize if the type is too small. We, that's why it's on 11 by 17 because at eight and a half by 11, it's completely illegible. But if you, if you read those, that'll highlight the differences between, between the two areas as you go through those. And, and I know it'll take some time for you to kind of read it and digest it and understand it, and that's why we presented tonight. But if we focus on the third column over, option one, this was, this was the, what we're calling, for lack of a better phrase, full program. It sizes the overall core of the building, core being non-team areas for 696 students. It, it has six teams. There, you'll see on there, there are special education areas. There's a kids program called for in the building. Certainly a, a media center that meets current size guidelines. Student commons is our name for a cafeteria and we talked about that a little bit in the workshop. It's a different kind of a, of a cafeteria, but effectively it's the place you go to eat, to eat lunch and maybe some other things. This option has a gymnasium, which is two full basketball courts side by side. It's a little bit smaller than what had been, we had talked about perhaps earlier, but it, it gives you a lot of flexibility. Just to put that in, in perspective, your high school essentially is three courts side by side, so it's roughly two-thirds, a little bit smaller probably than two-thirds the size of your high school court. This gym has two full courts and then in addition to that, a fitness slash health room. That gives you a total of potentially five teaching stations because each court can be split in half. A typical basketball court is cut in half for two teaching stations during PE class. So that's potentially up to five teaching stations, five gym activities that can go on simultaneously. An auditorium, in this case with 800 seats, an 800-seat auditorium with stage is included in, in this option, which was something we heard about a lot. This option has a band room that can accommodate 140 some students. I, 144 seems awfully specific, but that's just the way the math works. A, a large band room. A choral room for 65 students. There's a general music room in there. There's a technology area for music and ensemble rooms, several practice rooms, and you'll see the numbers listed. Clearly, we focused on music, given what we heard about your music program and what we saw at the high school when we visited in terms of the music program the kids are, are moving up to. So we did focus on that. There are language arts rooms with a separate kitchenette, a small room where they can actually prepare international foods and, and have that become part of the curriculum. There were three visual arts rooms, a 2D, a 3D and an electronic arts. And, and there's a lot of other spaces in here. I'm trying to hit the highlights. You'll see little tiny storage rooms and prep rooms and things that work around this. Two family and consumer science labs and three technology education rooms. Then at the bottom, there's a whole bunch of what we call operational support space. You need, you need restrooms and you need storage rooms and you need mechanical boiler rooms and air handling rooms. There's a whole bunch of stuff that's kind of behind the scenes. You also will see on your program, I didn't highlight it here, a factor of 40% for circulation in walls. Every building has hallways, stairs, and the walls themselves take up thickness. The factor you need to use is about 40% of the area you're going to use is taken up by area you either walk through or, or you actually build. That gives you a total building area for this, this up to 630 to 690 school of about 162,290 square feet. And that is, as we had said before, we think certainly less than, than your previous, your previous version. I think this is a, this would give you a very good middle school and, and provides, we believe all the spaces individually that were asked for, separate auditorium, separate cafeteria, two-court, two-court gym, plus all the team space that you, you asked for. In order to give you, you know, also what we heard was can we multitask spaces? Can we, can we, you know, can we bring that down even further? Because you will see at the bottom, this is over the state allocation. And we gave you that calculation on there. So we, we took a look at another building that would give you the same number of team areas. We want, we want to keep the classroom team area really the same, the same capacity. But are there ways to bring the build, make the building smaller by overlapping spaces and using them in a, in a different way and, and thinking about it some more? So that's the far right option. Takes a look at that. And I, and I will share with you that as you look at that, you will find variations on that and options within options. That, that always happens. But we didn't want to give you 15 options. We wanted to try to break it down and then we can, you guys can come up with the 15 options as you talk about it. So this is the same capacity. It's a, it's a, it's a building that could handle from 630 to almost 700 students within the same footprint, the same square footage. The, the core is still sized for 696 students. We've not changed the capacity, we've changed how it may be used. So as you go through here, there are still six teams, although we have deleted separate conference rooms and said, well, you could just use the classrooms. Because when kids all go to unified, it's, the team has time for common planning, they can use one of the empty rooms. So that's a small but simple way to look at it. We haven't, the, the special ed areas in that second program are identical. In the kids program, we did look at combining the daily living center with the classroom space. I don't know if that'll work. It's a thought. When we visited it, they, you know, they may need to have two separate rooms for their, for their population, but it's something to think about. The media center is the same. The student commons is the same size. And I think the note there just says that we were assuming three lunch waves, that you'd have each class, each grade eat together. You could have a larger commons and have, you know, feed all the kids in, in two sittings, but that doesn't really make sense in a three-grade school because then you're splitting one of the grades and, and that really doesn't work for building community or scheduling. In this one, we, we looked at reducing the size of the gym. Many, many middle schools of this size have a single full court gymnasium. There was a request and as we looked at it, really three teaching stations was what was necessary to provide the, the PE requirements. So certainly having the additional gym size is always useful for the community. Certainly you could, you could use it for PE class or, you know, you can always use gym space. In terms of actually still being able to provide your program, a single full gym, which provides two teaching stations combined with the fitness health room, which is the third teaching station, could support a school of this size. There's, there's no question about that. In this option, you will see that we deleted the separate auditorium and we looked at combining the auditorium and the student commons together in a single space. We mentioned at the workshop, this idea of a great hall. It's a, a commons that maybe has some movable seating. We've included the stage. We haven't eliminated the stage. There'd still be a full stage, but it would be attached to the student commons rather than attached to auditorium seating. So you'd have flexible seating in your student commons, but that, that does reduce the, the size of the building fairly considerably. The band room got a little bit smaller. In this case, we said, for, for sake of argument, reduce it to about 100 students in the band room. The choral room, our suggestion would be to use the stage as a choral room. Certainly there are many schools that do this. There, there are ways to provide an acoustical wall that separates the stage from the commons when you're not using it as a stage. It can be outfitted as a classroom. Easier to outfit it as a choral room because you don't have all the instrument and instrument storage to deal with. It's risers and chairs and, and things. So that's a possibility. The upside is it's bigger than the previous choral room, so you could actually have 100 kids in that room versus the 65 in the choral room. So, you know, pros and cons to everything. We did combine the general music room with, with the, the electronic music into one. We reduced the number of practice rooms. We, we did eliminate the ensemble room as a, as a, a potential thought. In the language arts area, instead of a separate room as a kitchenette, there's a way to put a kitchenette just along one side of one of the rooms and, and simply lock it off and, and combine it. We combined digital art with 2D, so there's two visual arts rooms instead of having a separate electro, digital visual arts room. Many schools do this and certainly it becomes a, it becomes a, a scheduling issue. We left the, the tech ed rooms, family consumer science and the support space the same. But if you look at these kinds of overlapping uses of space, you now get a program, a building area down about 30,000 square feet more, down to 132,510 square feet approximately, which is a significant reduction. Still above the state, but I think if you look carefully at the program we put together with the state guideline, it's probably, well, I will tell you, it's not a middle school that meets your middle school program. You know, I just don't know that, that you can do that, but I think the closer you get to it, certainly the better. That's about, I think, I think we do the math, it's an 18% difference in size from this program to the other one. But that gives you, I think, a range. They accommodate a, a range of students that I, I believe on the low end is reasonable. On the high end is, is maybe higher than you're going to see in a while, but certainly gives you ample room for the future. If you're at 532 now, like I said, if you built a five-team middle school, I'm not sure how the five teams work. If one of the grades only has one team, that, that's, that's a kind of an odd thing to try to schedule. That gets you down into a range that just accommodates the students you have now with room to grow up to about 580. I believe that's, that's the number. If you, if you reduce it by a team. That seems awfully tight to me and, and I don't know how an odd, an odd number of, of teams is, is difficult to work with. Because you'd have to, you'd have to bank on, on one grade being no more than 100, 125 kids to, to make it work. So those are two options. Those are detailed on the document. One of the things, just to briefly touch on before I, I certainly take questions and engage in more discussion, right now, we see potentially three waivers that we might need. And again, this is early. Certainly the site size, we've talked about as a possible waiver necessary. Well, likely because the site doesn't meet the 17 acres. We'd have to pursue that. And, and many of us have talked about the fact that this is an urban site and the state regulations just generally think you're going to build in suburban areas. On the classroom size, we're showing 900 square foot classrooms, which works all the way up to, I believe, 25 students. So we might, and we'd have to have this discussion, if we wanted to assume that someday they might hold 26 or 27 students, we might need to ask for a waiver on that. There are many, many states and many schools that have 900 square foot classrooms with 30 kids in them and it's a perfectly acceptable standard. I, I was looking at some of our previous schools. A lot of our middle schools have 800, 850 square foot classrooms for equivalent size student population. So I, I think it's a, in our opinion, it's a very workable classroom. It would be a question of, of potentially getting a waiver for the what-if scenario if your population grows to where you would need it. And then the minimum number of parking spaces, possibly. It really all depends on what we find as we start to work through the site over the next few weeks. Can we fit the 100, 100 or so spaces, I think we figured we would need for staff? Can we find a way to accommodate that either through, you know, as we've talked at the workshops, through being on the site or reworking some of the street parking or getting some agreements from municipal lots that satisfy the requirement? So right now, these are the three waivers from, from the state department of education that we would possibly have to go for. And as we work through this over the next month and talk to you some more, we'll know better as the design evolves where we are. So that is our brief presentation of a fairly dense document and I don't know if you want to engage in questions and answers now. I leave that to the discretion of the chair. But we're here.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I want to thank you for last week's presentation. The back and forth discussion, I think, was just what we need. So thank you for that. I have a bunch of questions. The site size waiver that you're talking about, that's for new construction. And it is my understanding that we are asking for a substantial renovation. The, the building, it's, the bones are good, the structure's good, it's just, we need a new boiler and the walls need to be knocked down to make. So therefore, I, it's my understanding from having read Ed 321 that we don't need a waiver because it's an existing school?
When we met with Ed Murdock last week, we did discuss that with him. Given the nature of the work that would be done there, we actually would put it into new construction.
Okay.
And that's when the waiver would kick in.
Even though we're renovating what we have and, and I, I think desiring to keep the facade and the dome and the...
The renovation work is when you're actually retaining a lot of the existing systems.
Okay.
We're basically gutting the building, keeping the shell.
Okay.
So we're essentially building new.
Excellent. The other was the parking. Again, it can, it doesn't have to be contiguous with the site. So you, you had mentioned the municipal lots could satisfy that? And then would we not need a waiver?
I defer to Doug.
We, we put that up there as a potential. Again, the objective is that we'd want to meet the state standard. And also talking with Mr. Murdock, there were some opportunities there that if it,
And also talking with Mr. Murdock, there were some opportunities there that if it, the parking doesn't necessarily have to be on school property. There can be written agreements that secure the parking, and that would then be received by the state and reviewed.
Okay.
But we just wanted to keep that option out there.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. And then I just, I have a couple of questions about demographics and the... I'm just curious. It seems like you're working backwards. We have a number of teams at twenty-four students a classroom. Means the school could hold between six-thirty-six and six-ninety-six, instead of working from here are the projected demographics, working up that way?
We, we did both. That's, I mean, we did both. And again, as I've mentioned several times, we're not demographers, and that's not what we do. We work with numbers that, that, we work with them a lot. Bless you. We work with them quite a bit. And we did it both ways. That's why I talked about the five-team school, because we, we looked at, because we certainly heard loud and clear, gee, what if, what if, should we build a five-hundred-and-fifty or five-seventy? I think five-seventy, five-eighty might have been the number that, that had been pushed around, you know, profit is perhaps the low, the low end. So if you look at that, that's why I wanted to talk about teams being the building block. If we were doing a, an elementary school, it's very easy to say, well, just add classrooms, and, you know, so many classrooms make a school of five-eighty. We want to go to six-twenty-five. We'll add four more classrooms, and, and that works pretty, pretty well. And some years, there'll be a couple of first grades and a couple of more seconds. It's a lot more flexible. And even at a high school, it can be more flexible. The, the issue with the middle school really is this issue of team, and, and you can't divorce, I don't believe you can divorce capacity from team. So we looked at a five-team school, and just when you do the math, and we kind of, our gut told us that, but when we sat down and looked at it, a five-team school gets you in that high-five-hundred range, mid to high-five-hundreds. So we can certainly put that on the table as, as an option. But I think there are issues with odd number teams in terms of scheduling and rolling the dice, that every year, you're going to have one grade that's, that's a little bit lower. I think you get more flexibility, long-term, out of an even number, out of the six teams that you have. And, and we certainly don't think you need to go to a seventh team, because that, again, you have the odd number issue, although less of a problem, because it's, it's now seven. But that gets you, I mean, truly north of almost eight hundred students, which seems, you know, it's double what, what your projections would, would show. So everything, again, this is why we're, we're presenting it and for, to, to begin the, the conversation in, in earnest. But I think as a, as a kind of midpoint, if you do a building that accommodates somewhere in that six, in, in the six-hundreds, that's going to give you room for growth, flexibility, and not lock you into a problem of having one, too few teams or any, but you don't want to end up with this team that doesn't fit at, at the end of the day.
Well, the preliminary application that we need to submit in December talks about demographics, and it says the number must be based on valid statistical process. So while we might agree that we want to choose our numbers from the team, the state is going to ask, asks for it for, for numbers. And the School Board Association has up to, the last information I could find was from two thousand and four, so it's definitely outdated. But they have the, the highest five-year average through two thousand and fourteen as being five-hundred-and-seventeen students for Portsmouth. So, which is a big difference. So I guess I'm concerned looking only at it from the team aspect, as opposed to the actual number. Just because we build it doesn't mean we can, we'll fill it in. So I don't know if you, I mean, you said you're not demographers, so how do you, how do we incorporate?
Well, we, we, we work with the numbers that you guys, and, and your, you know the town, you know the city, you know, you know the expectation. I know some folks did talk at the workshops about the future and what it may hold in terms of housing starts and in terms of folks moving here. This is a, this is a fifty-year building, and we, as I've, as I've said all the time, this is a black art. We really don't know.
Hundred-year building. Hundred-year building.
Well, you're going to have to replace the roof in less than a hundred years.
That's fine. The building will still be there.
Oh, the building, the, the structure could be here a couple of hundred years, but you will be replacing windows, the roof, and the mechanical units in twenty-five to thirty years. I, that's the best we can, best anyone can offer. But no, it's, the build, the space you're building, the physical space has to last you a very long time, because this, this chance doesn't come along. The, well, and Doug can actually speak to that a little bit, because you, we did talk to the state, and he did, when he went up to talk about what they would accept. And my, I'll paraphrase and just jump up and kick me if, if I'm wrong, but they'll, you never have a problem correcting me before. My understanding was that is, that they, they will look for reasonable numbers, that the board stands behind with reasonable expectations about future growth, that have some level of, of justification. And, and they offered, I, I think that they didn't feel uncomfortable with numbers in the six-hundreds. It didn't seem an unreasonable amount of growth to build into a school of this size, that they might be uncomfortable if we try to cut it too tight to what your current enrollment is, or even your future. We, we really don't know beyond five years what your enrollment's going to be. Nobody does. And, and so I, I, best I can, I guess, can offer you is that as, as, as a board, you need to come to grips with, with your understanding of what you think the future will hold for your town, because you, you certainly know the city better than we do. We can guide you in how to make that into a school. We can, we can offer you our expertise from other areas. But I've, I've never seen two cities grow the same way. It's a, it's a very different dynamic, depending on where you are. We're, we're working in some cities that are losing population. You know, the folks are leaving and, and closing schools, and that's a different dynamic than you certainly have here. So yeah, I did, we did talk about the numbers. It goes to five-seventeen, but you have outpaced your, as I recall, you've outpaced what the projections were each and every year. And I, I think your best folks on the board that have looked at it think you'll continue to outpace. And so then the question becomes, what is the level of risk you want to take that you build a building too small or too big or just right? And now I'm starting to sound like Goldilocks, but it's...
I just see that the six-hundred-and-ninety-six, seven-hundred students as, as...
And, and that's, that's filling...
That's a big number.
Well, that's also filling every room to twenty-seven students. I mean, that's a, that's also much larger classes than you have now. If you look at the low end of that, which is, I think, the more likely, I think it is much more likely, looking at your numbers, that you would be at the low end of that, or, or perhaps even a little lower, certainly in the, in the short term. That's a very comfortable size. The twenty-four students per class is a very comfortable. Twenty-seven is right at the top end of your, of your contractual range. It's frankly at the high end of almost any middle school we've worked on.
I don't think anyone wants to see twenty-seven kids.
If you imagine every, you know, every room at that capacity. Now, that said, you could look at these core areas, and maybe we decide, let's not size the core for the six-ninety-six. Let's size the core somewhere down closer to the middle of that. Maybe it's six-fifty. Knowing that you have sort of built-in expansion room. If, if we size the core at six-fifty, six-sixty, you bring, you bring the size of the building down, you bring the cost down. The classrooms are the classrooms. You have to build a certain number of classrooms to accommodate the low end or the high end. It doesn't change. But you know that you have that kind of flex in your building, that if in fact you did have a big spike, if the huge development happens at P's, and it's all housing, and you've got just kids, you know, a, a huge influx of kids, knowing that you have that room to, to accommodate the classroom numbers, you can make the core areas work. You could, you know, nobody likes to do it for a short period of time. You could do four lunch waves and get the kids through. You could, you know, the library's pretty flexible. That's a scheduling issue. If you've got a library the size you're talking about, that can, that can flex. It, you know, it really becomes the cafeteria. The gym, you might want to look at that. Maybe you do build a slightly larger gym to accommodate, accommodate growth. We've done some middle schools that have the equivalent of three half-court gyms, which would be sort of halfway in between what we just showed you. We, we said two full-size courts or one court. We've done one that's sort of a court and a half, so it's three half-courts somewhere in the middle. So maybe the, maybe the discussion we all have over the next two weeks is, maybe that core doesn't need to be built to the maximum, because that's where the big space is. As you can see from our two options, as soon as you, you know, remove the, the auditorium and double up space, all of a sudden, you, you cut the program by twenty percent. So maybe that's where you look at. You build the classroom space, and you, you think about, well, it's not, the likelihood of us going to six-hundred-and-ninety-six is huge. I'm sorry.
Forgive me, Dexter. I have one more question. Yeah. And it, again, it goes to the, the size. In one, you have, by doing the teams and the number of students, you have a hundred-and-fifty-six square feet per student in one example, and then in the other, you have a hundred-and-ninety? And is that, did you get those numbers just by doing the math backwards?
That's just to serve a check. Yeah, that's just to see where, what does that work out at? We didn't, we didn't target a square foot per student. We, we worked space by space. What's the right size for the student population, for the need as expressed to us by the community? Then when you total it all up, you, you just back-solution it, and that's what you get. And, and we've seen in our own work, schools that range from a hundred-and-seventy up to, we did find one last week after I gave the range on TV. We went back and checked. There was one upwards of two-hundred-and-thirty square feet per student, a very large middle school. So that they range all over the place.
I have Dexter, Kent, and then Lisa.
Well, I had two questions and a comment, but now I have two comments and a question.
Okay.
So the first question, the one question is that the team structure that you put up, is that unique to Portsmouth, or is that typical in the middle schools that you've worked?
It's very typical. What, what, it's very typical. Some, some towns have one more classroom, one less classroom, but the three and one is, is a very typical structure.
The comment, and it really was a question, but I'd, I'd actually suggest a third option, which is really to build the core, maybe something less than seven-hundred, around six-fifty. Do the six teams around the team structure that you've laid out and, and see what happens. And the, the third comment, if I could, Mr. Chair, is, I'd like to pass out a couple of documents. Comes from the U.S. Census Bureau. And just spend two minutes talking about these. Jim, if you want to grab one. So these come from the U.S. Census Bureau. There's two documents. The first, the first page lays out projections that they made in two thousand and five, projecting out to two thousand and thirty. And the first document is for fifty states, current census data, two thousand census data, and projections two thousand and thirty. And what that first document shows, that New Hampshire will be the fifteenth fastest-growing state in the country. It'll be the fastest-growing state in the northeast, and by far the fastest-growing state in, in New England. And the U.S. Census Bureau is projecting that the New Hampshire state population will increase thirty-three percent in, in the next twenty-two years. If you go to the second page, again, from the U.S. Census Bureau, they begin to break out information by age group. And not to spend a lot of time on this, but if you go about two-thirds of the way down, there's an under-eighteen age group. And what that shows is that, again, this, this data is for the state of New Hampshire. It shows that under-eight, under-age eighteen population in New Hampshire between two thousand and two thousand and thirty will increase fourteen-point-eight percent. So if you just do the math and, and apply that approximately fifteen percent to our current Portsmouth High School population, that gets you at about the six-hundred-and-ten people, six-hundred-and-ten students, without considering the types of economic growth that some of the city councilors talked about at, at your workshop last week. So for sure, it has to be something bigger than what we have today. It would be very short-sighted if, if we didn't build a bigger. I sort of agree with Rebecca. Seven-hundred might be a little bit on the high side, and so I might ask you to, to see what alternatives there are, maybe at the, the core range of six-hundred-and-fifty.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kent.
Mr. Chair, fellow board members, I, I, I'd like to make a request that we, because I have at least five or six questions without really even going into the material, that we schedule a work session an hour before our next regular board meeting on the twenty-seventh?
It's the twenty-seventh. We were talking about that earlier, but...
We have the, the retiring teachers coming. We have a retirement reception.
Well, maybe we can do an hour to, to an hour and a half somewhere, or, or prior to that, that night, because you're right, that's retiring. That's, that's a night that's been, you know, tradition and honor. I'm not looking to at all interrupt that. But, and I know that just looking at this, the information, I don't know if we can't get a printout of the PowerPoint, too. Just, you know, looking around the table, you know, I, I would like to even say that some questions might be able to be given to the architects prior. I didn't see any information on field usage and just a couple of other things that come to my mind. But instead of us taking the next, you know, go-around of everybody, an hour to an hour and a half would be really nice sometime between then. So I'm just making the recommendation for a workshop prior to our next board meeting.
I have no problems with that. We just need to find a date. We were thinking about, but I see, but I hear what you're saying. We were thinking about putting an hour of the next meeting for this, but it sounds as if we, we might need more before then. So we'll do, we'll schedule another one.
If I could suggest, I don't know if this is appropriate, but, you know, if we could be in a room other than this, perhaps around a table in a workshop session, it might be easier to have a conversation. And, and if we could, actually, if we could do it other than the day on the twenty-seventh, I, that would work better for me.
Other than the twenty-seventh?
Yeah. My son is being inducted into an honor society that night, which I didn't realize until about an hour ago when I checked my calendar, and it's kind of, kind of important. It's a thespian. He's a, he's an actor. It's kind of a big deal for him, and I'd really like to be home for that.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Kent, did you have anything else?
I have a lot, yeah. I think I'll hold, because it's time to digest.
Okay. Rebecca Steew, wait. You want to say something about...
I just want to make a quick comment. I, I do have, they have provided me with, with the PowerPoint presentation, as well as the PowerPoint presentation from the first listening sessions. And we had put up on the website that we would like responses in addition to what we'd already have come in by the sixteenth, which, which is Friday. So what I will do is, I will take what we've collected on Monday, and we'll, I'll, I'll make copies and put together packets and, and get those out immediately to the board members with copies of the presentations. So you'll at least have some other stuff, all the PowerPoint printouts, and, and the comment sheets that I, that we get between now and the sixteenth, we'll forward out to all board members, so you'll have the information to work with.
Okay. If we just go back to the order, and then, so Lisa, and then you.
Hey, um, to ask you a question. One of the things that this will do is, there'll be a transition time during the construction for the kids who are in middle school, which we will clearly want to minimize the educational impact of that and communicate it really well to the community. What are things that you have done in other communities that worked really well? Can you kind of paint a picture?
Well, for starters, the, the program that you have, that's just a listing of the spaces that the finished building needs to have. What we will be doing, when we, when we start to take whatever the final program is and apply it to the site and design it, that's the time that we'll need to think about the transition period as we begin to apply it. The, the thing that works frankly the best is to build new space, move into it, and then, you know, go back into the existing. You know, it might mean that we build a series of maybe one or two, two teams worth of new classroom space, and then go back in and renovate the building in big chunks. You know, we don't, we don't, what we don't want to do is, is go in and try to renovate three rooms on the, on one floor and two rooms on the other. You want to be able to close a whole building, put up a temporary wall that's got good acoustical separation, fire separation, and work on the other side of it. Those are the kinds of things that we've done in, in other areas. Beyond that, I would suggest that ahead of time, you know, the, the design work takes about a year, that you engage the students in the conversation during design. That we, we do a number of things. We can just simply go talk to them about what's going to happen. We can engage them in learning activities. The middle school teams could, you know, could work with us and use the, the design of the building as a learning activity. There's lots of math, science, history, social studies. I mean, architecture's a really good thing. That's very, very holistic and very encompassing, that, you know, a lot of lessons can be drawn out of it. We've worked with teachers to do that, and even things as simple as engaging students sometimes in art projects that will be applied to the new building. There's lots of ways that we can engage them in the, in the design and construction process, which, oh, it doesn't mitigate, it, it doesn't eliminate the potential noise and, and disruption that will occur. We'll, we'll minimize it. It certainly makes it, engages them and, and offsets to some extent the, some of the inconvenience they may have. And, you know, lots of meetings with parents and lots of newsletters that go out, and with the neighbors in the, in the area, just to kind of continually inform them. We've often worked with the contractor to produce newsletters that go out on a regular basis. You've got a great website here. You know, that middle school dialogue database is certainly a great place to, during construction, post what's going to happen in the next month, what to expect.
Thank you.
Please, I mean Rebecca.
I would just, April last year, a demographer by the name of Peter Francese wrote a letter to Bob saying projections show below-average population over the next decade and school-age population declining throughout Rockingham County. And he offered to attend one of our board meetings, so I would like to ask that he be contacted about coming to our work session so that we could get some demographic information that's even more specific than the U.S. Census, because Rock, and even more specific to Rockingham County, because we're certainly unique in that. So if you could contact him and ask him to come to the work session whenever we decide that is.
Yeah, well, oh, I suppose we could. I mean, I have no problem with that. I'm just kind of thinking, you know, he may be a demographer who suggests a certain number, but I would then want to sort of suggest that somebody like a Ross could tell be there, because he made the same, he made the point to us when he spoke to the board that actually Jim said, in terms of being able to really predict numbers, and his concern from the economic development point of view is that if you look at the numbers that are being projected, and you actually build towards those numbers, then you might possibly be cutting off Portsmouth's future economic development, because commute, businesses that might want to consider moving into the area may look at the school district and see that the building's already near capacity, and why would I want to come here if I, if my, if the families that I want to bring in, or if my company wants to grow over the next fifteen to twenty years, that this school's going to have a hard time sustaining that, so.
Right. Well, I think, you know, he offered, and he is a demographer. I think it would be great, and certainly wouldn't hurt anything to hear what he has to say.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, could I, as long as we're talking about demographers, I understand why Rebecca would want to have Peter Francisi maybe meet with us, but my experience with the, with the demographers has been, and we've had probably three or four demographers meet with us at different times. I find it much...
different times, I find it much more understandable if all the demographers were in one room at the same time, because they all have their own set of data that they use.
Hard hats.
And I'm not even sure if I'm recommending that, believe me.
Invite them all.
Except that I just think any one person, they all have their own bend on demographics, and I don't want to be, I'm just afraid about getting people too excited by one individual person.
Well, I think for the, at least the new members of the board, we haven't heard from any demographers, so invite them all, let them duke it out. You know, the more information that we have and the better decisions that we can make.
I'm more concerned with them duking it out with you.
Well, I can hold my own, Bob, don't worry about that.
Mr. Chair, if we are going to do that, most demographers work in five-year chunks. And projecting five years is really meaningless for this project. And so if we are going to invite them in, they're going to have to project out at least to the half-life of this building.
Right.
Which is 25 years.
Right.
Because we've already seen that demographic information that's five years old that has been wrong for us.
Wrong.
And it's actually misinformation.
From the New Hampshire School Board Association, demographer, yeah. Well, I guess, can we think about it? I'm wondering if the, no?
No, I would like.
Just do it. Because I'm suggesting, I'm thinking that it might be if we invited them to come to talk to us at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I think it's separate.
Present to us and.
Okay. But I would like to hear from them, because I think that's going to drive this and end up.
Right. Because the programmatic decisions that we make, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could make a recommendation.
Sure.
If they've done the work, it must be set down on paper. Why don't we get the paper first, take a look at it?
What's that?
And if we see as if, they haven't done it for 30 years. If they've done the work and they set it down on paper, we can look at it and then we can evaluate whether it's worth our time to actually spend meeting time talking with them.
So you're, so.
What I'm asking for them is ask for the studies that they've done that project population out to at least the half-life of this building, out to 2030. And if they have information specific to Rockingham County, then ask them to provide it to us. But not necessarily in a meeting format until we get it.
Okay.
Can we go back to the team thing where we have two teams per grade?
Right.
The sixth grade has about 200 kids in it, which is a very big class. So you have sort of on the high end, you've got about 100 kids in a team. You know, what would be the lowest end that you could get to that you would go down a team, right? I mean.
Well, what are the numbers now?
Because you'd have to have 100 kids to go down to one team in a grade, and I don't.
All right. This is really what's starting to make sense to me, is maybe we do need to have a work session. I don't mind inviting the demographers, I don't want the conversation about demographics to take up, you know, a major portion of the meeting. So if people, if you'd like to come and talk to us for five or 10 minutes, and we'll invite Ross Kettlebe or anyone else who would like to come talk to us for five or 10 minutes.
Can we decide at the work session if having all the demographers in is the best use of our time? Can we decide that together at the work session? I mean, it feels like a discussion.
And not invite them?
Well, potentially invite them, but let's.
Mr. Chair, in all honesty, we could go back, do we invite them or not? We need to schedule a work session. A board member has asked for the demographers, we've asked for the information ahead of time. It's not bad to get the information, but we really need to move on from this. So let's set a work session, let's see if the demographers can send their information ahead of time and come on the 27th to discuss it.
Okay.
Because we're not going to say tonight, hey, build a school for 622 and that's it tonight, so.
If you do, I'm good with that, but you can understand that you can't.
I want 621, Brendan.
So just so I understand, so we can resolve this, we will be asking the demographers for printed information ahead of time for us to look at, and then we will make a decision at the work session? That doesn't.
Well, I think you have the printed information to be able to ask them to come.
Yes, why don't we do that?
And they're here.
We'd have to invite them before, obviously, before the work session to come to the work session.
Right.
I have all your information, I have a question on X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
And leave it at that, and, you know, they're going to tell you from the get-go, hey, these aren't the most accurate stuff.
Well, we'll see. Okay. Sherry, did you have something?
Oh, no, I'm ready to try and pick a date for a work session.
Okay. This is raw life here happening on television. Okay, so everybody have their calendars out if we want to pick a date, and maybe we can nail this down?
Not the 27th.
No, not the 27th. So here's my suggestion, since my life seems to revolve around school board meetings on Tuesday.
It's around us, isn't it?
A week from tonight, which would be the 20th of May, which is a Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
There is a tech meeting that ends at 5:30, so we could begin this at 6:00. I hear no objections, is that?
Chairman.
Yes?
Excuse me, there's supposed to be a secondary advisory meeting at 5:00, Portsmouth High School.
And what time does that go to?
6:00.
5:00 to 6:00.
5:00 to 6:00.
So can we start at 6:30?
Yep.
Is that okay with J C J and the Stephanie Lawrence?
We'll make it okay.
Okay. All right, so 6:30, May 20th, for a work session.
In the boardroom.
Yeah, in the boardroom at Little Harbor.
Wonderful. Thank you.
It's a tighter space.
Yep.
Okay.
If you do have any questions you'd like us to answer in advance, please get them to Mr. Bartlett, and he'll get them to us, and we'll try to be prepared with any answers if there's specific things or additional information you'd like us to bring.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right, because I'm being frosty, and I want to drive back three nights. That's all that matters.
Okay, if we could move along, I'd like to invite Attorney Sullivan up to talk to us about the wonders of email.
Bob, just in case you're wondering, Bob, it's 5:00 to 3:00 Baltimore.
Hey, what?
Top of the fourth.
I haven't been paying attention.
It's been a tough, it's been a tough week. If we had to keep talking about demographers.
He's texting us. It's going to be.
Thank you very much for inviting me. This discussion of emails had its genesis several months ago, really, when Superintendent and I were speaking about some difficulties that were being experienced around the state, perhaps most notably in the city of Dover, in which public bodies such as yourself were having issues, public issues regarding emails. We wanted to make sure that nothing happened in Portsmouth that anyone would deem to be in violation of any laws. Now, at that time, we were laboring under the difficult situation of a right-to-know law which had been drafted largely before the existence of emails or many of the electronic communication methods which are now common. There has been a subsequent superseding event. On May 8th, a week ago, the state legislature adopted, finally, amendments to the right-to-know law, R.C. 91A, which specifically address the topics that we had intended to speak with you about before the law changed. The two big issues that were making problems for communities were the question of when emails to or from either elected officials or appointed officials were public records that would have to be maintained and have to be produced basically on request of any citizen at any time. In Dover, for example, city councilors would exchange emails with constituents and then find out somewhat after the fact that those emails were public records. And sometimes things that an elected official might say to one constituent, the elected official really wouldn't want that exchange of communication shared with the world. But in fact, sometimes that exchange does have to be shared with the world. Their situation a little more extreme than ours because in the Dover City Council, for example, the city actually gave all the councilors web addresses to use for email communications, and that was a virtual guarantee that whatever that Dover City Councilor did on that particular, using that particular web address, it would be a public record, even if it was information which the councilor thought was being exchanged with simply one constituent alone. The second big problem that was occurring was when a number of elected officials would more or less simultaneously be exchanging emails or other forms of electronic communication such that it was said at that time that they may in fact be conducting illegal meetings. The right-to-know law in New Hampshire for a great many years has required that any time a quorum of a public body convened to deal with public business, that that was a meeting which had to be preceded with some formalities, most notably 24 hours' public notice posted in two places. The meeting had to be open to the public, and the meeting had some subsequent formalities, most notably minutes had to be kept and made available to the public. If a quorum of the city council, let's say, or a school board began to exchange emails more or less simultaneously, then it's a pretty much guarantee that there would have been no public notice ahead of time, no member of the public would have been involved in this discourse, and no minutes would have been kept. It was alleged in some of the articles we provided to you, for example, that therefore these email communications were violations of the right-to-know law. That conclusion was based upon speculation as to what a court would do if these facts were presented under the right-to-know law as it existed at that time. Well, this has all been pretty well cleared up now for a week. The right-to-know law has been amended, both of those issues are addressed very specifically, and effective July 1st, this coming July 1st, there's absolutely no doubt that public records exchanged between school board members and staff members, say the superintendent, and any emails which might be exchanged between a quorum of the school board, not perhaps just two of you, but the majority of you, those emails are now public records. The term that's going to be used after July 1st is governmental records, but governmental records is defined to include what we always called public records up until this week. So if you should send an email to the superintendent, or if you should share an email among more than half of the school board, then you should assume that that email is a public record and would have to be produced to anybody who asked to see it. A good rule that flows from that is that you should not write that email unless you could live with reading it on the front page of the Portsmouth Herald, because you may very well read it there. The second change in the right-to-know law deals with that, the second major change in the right-to-know law deals with that second thing that I told you, which is that if by means of emails or some other form of electronic communication, you should start to consider issues, then that consideration is a meeting. And unless you have posted notice 24 hours in advance, unless you make it available to the public to participate in your exchange of emails, and unless you keep minutes of what you have done, then you would be violating the right-to-know law. The newest version of the right-to-law says that in so many words, really, and it says that it doesn't prohibit you, for example, from doing this kind of email meeting, but it says you have to follow the formalities of the law. You have to post it, you have to allow members of the public to participate in your exchange of emails, you have to keep minutes, you have to keep the records. Probably therefore, the better practice would be really not to engage in significant email correspondence involving, at a more or less simultaneous time, more than a quorum of the school board, because I think it is more difficult for you to comply with the right-to-know law when you do that than it would be if you just have a more or less traditional school board meeting on the topic. There is absolutely no doubt that the policy of state law is that your deliberations on the issues before you must be done in public. And there's express language in the new law that says that anyone who uses electronic or other means of communication to circumvent the requirement that you conduct your deliberations and considerations and discussions and make your decisions in public, that it would be an express violation of the right-to-know law. So the superintendent and I felt that it would just be a good idea to have a little bit of a discussion of these things as a preventative measure so that there won't be any problems in the future. Now, just so happens, because of the timing of the new law, you were the first of the boards, commissions, or agencies in this city to have this little discussion. We will, however, in the city's legal department, be producing some form of documentation which synthesizes the new law with what remains of the old law, will distribute it widely to everybody, including yourselves, so that hopefully some of the bad publicity that's occurred in other places will never occur here. And that is my presentation, I'm certainly willing to deal with any questions.
Thank you. Sherry, and then Rebecca.
Okay, well, I'm confused because I don't know anything about technology anyways. So what if it's?
Nor I might add, do I.
You read an article in the newspaper about the dropout rate. So you go to the newspaper, you click the link, and you CC it to every school board member to read.
Correct.
Does that mean anything? I mean, is that something that we should print?
Arguably, you have just initiated an unlawful meeting.
Okay. It's a good thing I don't go on and click any links, I don't even know how to get them, even how to CC them. So you should never CC every member of the school board?
CCing every member of the school board is a red flag.
Okay.
But four.
CC.
Yeah, and I might add, CCing three members of the school board, and then five minutes later CCing three more, and five minutes, three more, that's three red flags.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rebecca.
Um, my question was, because technology is so integrated in our lives, would there, is the city going to look at possibly wikis or chatrooms or blogs where we can post to everybody and everybody in the city can log on if they so choose and read them?
Right.
You know, you or I are more technologically advanced than I am, but that does sound to me like a good idea since, you know, we have to be dealing with these things.
Right.
The technology's not going away, the right-to-know law is not going to change with regard to these things. We, I think, need to find a way by means of municipal policy to deal with this stuff. I mean, maybe create a way that sort of a virtual meeting can occur. It would have to satisfy the things I talked about a few minutes ago, but it is certainly possible.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
So if I'm trying to understand something that one of my other board members knows more about than I do, and I write a sort of a one-on-one email, can you help me understand this?
Right.
How's that?
I think a good analogy to analyze those things is to think about if all the school board members were walking around the city. If you, on the sidewalk at Market Square, meet one of the school board member, Chairman Schulman, and you stop to talk about some issue, you do not violate the right-to-know law, it's not a meeting. It is, however, it is a meeting if a quorum of the school board should happen to meet in Market Square one day and begin to discuss an item of school board business. So the email thing is kind of the same. If it's just two of you, I do not believe that you are either creating public records or having an illegal meeting. But if it is a majority, I think you're doing both.
Okay.
So if I could just follow that up for a second, so if I have a one-on-one conversation with a school board member, a new topic that came up, something that they suggested, oh, I hadn't thought about that before, we sort of get into this conversation, and then at some point that email, maybe three or four days later, is sort of forwarded with another little comment to, I mean, over time, this idea could permeate through the full board.
Right.
Individually, one at a time.
And at some point, you have a problem.
Okay.
Not day one, but definitely by the end. The way it all works is, keep in mind, is that governmental deliberation in this state, governmental decision-making, governmental receipt of information, all the things that you do really needs to be done in public, except in very rare circumstances described in the ordinance, I mean, in statute. And so that once you start to have any kind of meaningful communication by email, you know, you need to start thinking, we got to find a way to get this discussion into the public. With regard to communication with staff members, superintendent, for example, is a little bit different. Any communication with a staff member is presumptively a public record because the statute, well, the statute says so. Very broadly defines a governmental record, says basically any record in any office of any public official, administrative official is a public record unless there's some exception, very few exceptions. So even one email to the superintendent creates the public record, but obviously not a meeting. One email to another school board member may not create the public record oddly enough or be the meeting, but one, but an email to a quorum of school board members does both. You create the public record and have a meeting.
What if, for example, I'm just thinking, I'm looking at her agenda for tonight and it's already getting towards nine and it's already long. So what if I were to say to somebody, you know, to the board, I want to put this off, but I'd like every board member to email me their suggestions based on that so we could, I could accumulate the information and present it at the next meeting. It's not a conversation, it's just a one-way communication with their thoughts to me as the chair, is that?
The way I read this thing, the purely one-way communication that isn't receiving information, isn't deliberating, isn't making decisions, it's not a meeting.
That would be receiving.
Now, I have to say, it's a new law, a brand-new law. People will be getting sued over this before the year's out, I'm sure.
But you don't want it to be us.
Fight education for the rest of us. I'm just hoping that we're not the ones that get sued and somebody else will be fighting the education.
Anyone else?
One more. So our one-way communication with Dr. Lister is automatically public knowledge, but we haven't broken any laws, right?
Yeah, a one-way communication with Dr. Lister is presumptively a public record.
So as long as there's a copy and if somebody asks to see if you ever sent an email to Dr. Lister and we can produce it, it's fine and you can print it out and it can be that I had to, you know, cancel the meeting or something?
You know, I only dare say this in a public forum because I know that the newspapers are well aware. They could actually walk in tomorrow and ask to see all of Dr. Lister's emails for the last month. And maybe with one or two exceptions, they'd be entitled to see them all. And under the new statute, they in fact would be entitled to have electronic reproduction of all of those emails.
Any other comments, any other questions?
Well, this is enlightening.
Yes, it is. It's a new era.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Attorney Sullivan. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I request that we move item H up to the next item for discussion.
Okay.
Do we have scholarship people here?
Hang on, so you want to move up your early start report?
Correct.
Can I just suggest this, if we want to look at timing, we can go till 10. But is there anything that's on this agenda or committee reports that we can let go of till next time?
Infinite campus virtual high school, can it wait?
That could wait. You think? The Quality Education Index conversation, which I asked people to think about, can wait?
I think it should wait.
Okay.
Hold on the AYP.
Do we want to hold on the AYP? I'd like to hear about the AYP.
I'm just too confused about the AYP.
AYP.
Okay. Okay, and the scholarships we want to go through?
Those will be very quick. If I could just walk through those, those will be very fast.
Okay, and could we do the scholarships and then just zip you right in?
Well, I was just wanting to move along because we have someone out there who's been waiting.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
A middle school teacher who gets up very early in the morning.
Okay, no, I didn't know that. Fine. If that's okay with everybody, we can move it.
Do we need to vote on that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, briefly, we're listed on here as early school start, but that's not really the name of the committee. Start and end committee. And this committee did some work about 10 years ago when Minneapolis, Minnesota made their big switch with their seven high schools, seven middle schools, and 71 elementary schools did a flip-flop scheduling. So anyway, the committee sort of went away for a while and it resurrected itself two years ago as a Portsmouth Middle School Aspirations Committee. And since research, especially over the past 20 years, and I have given most of you a packet of some of the research tonight, the research continues to show that secondary students are at risk for sleep-deprived consequences. Therefore, the committee would like to look at the current Portsmouth School Department daily schedules and see if a different time schedule could be created that would give students their best chance of academic success and personal safety. Due to the changes in sleep patterns which occur with puberty, middle and high school students have great difficulty getting the eight and a half to nine and a quarter hours of sleep required for them. This sleep deprivation is linked to low grades in school performance, negative moods and irritability, some loss of behavioral control, increased likelihood of stimulant use, inability to stay focused on processing information, memory deficits, anxiety and depression, decreased creativity, inability to handle complex tasks, and falling asleep in class. Elementary students, on the other hand, benefit from an earlier school start time because it's more in sync with their natural sleep patterns. The committee would like to investigate the possibility of adjusting school times to better meet the educational and physical needs of all students and promote educational excellence throughout the school system. To this end, we have formulated three surveys, one for parents, one for teachers, and one for staff. And I've given you a copy of each of those. We, Leslie and I and others, did some stapling together this morning and hopefully by the end of the week, they will be ready to be disseminated and back by the end of the month. And once we have some of that information, we will be glad to pass it on to you. And keeping in mind that the goal in the end is what is best for our students. And do you have anything you want to add? Two SAW committee chair, Erin Bacham, middle school.
I think I cleared out the room pretty quick here. And it's an early morning, thank you, though unfortunately, it doesn't actually matter for me. It's more my students that I'm really worried about. And in looking at the amount of data, the past couple of years have really been watersheded in surveys and longitudinal data coming out. And when I started looking at this versus even just in the last year, there's so much more information. And I know there's a lot of complexities with looking at a systematic change like this. And I do believe that you have to look at it systematically to be able to address it. Looking at just one school here or part of this, I know this has come up in other ways. But with funding and I certainly, money doesn't grow on trees and it's not going to grow on trees in Portsmouth anytime soon. Trying to find some different ideas and solutions and ways we could possibly look at this. You know, and this is taking time and we need the data from the public, from teachers, from students, from parents, just to see, you know, what the possibilities are, but particularly, you know, what is best for students.
Rebecca.
Where did you get the material for the survey?
There is a ton of different places. This was a basic handout that was given to parents just to give some different feedback and reading sources. I had like stacks. There's so much out there. And one of the best sites that, if I had more time, I will print one and I will send it with Ann. The National Sleep Foundation has an amazing adolescent sleep needs and pattern study. And I can even send it by email if that's an easy way for people to access it. That'd be the scary thing.
You're sleeping in the back?
It's a great resource. That one in particular, it's one survey with bullet. We pulled from a number of sources just to show some different things and include some of the longitudinal data. But there is so much on the web and I really, there's some great quality studies and things, particularly out of, you know, Minneapolis because of the amount of time they've done this and the longitudinal studies, which that was the first thing I get really excited about is seeing over time just the dropout rates that have improved, looking at test scores which increasingly become more and more, you know, of concern to us at this point. So I have a lot of information from many different sources and at any point, I'd be happy to speak with any of you and show you just some of the stuff that's out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we can hand it to them not directly.
First of all, thank you, Erin, for staying and doing this.
The middle school, I was good to hear what's going on.
Yeah, you know, sleep to me is an odd thing anyway because when you get up at 3 o'clock, it doesn't...
But you see eighth graders at, you know, 7:40 in the morning.
But here's my question, and I guess when we get the surveys back, I'm hoping that you and Ann and others come back and we give it a good looking at. My time on the board, I've seen this two other times. This will be the third complete time. The first time it was done by Joe Ornstein, very well reported. The second time it was done by Dr. Reverend Arthur Hilton, outstanding information that was brought back. And each time, what the, I don't think there was ever any disagreement about wanting to make sure that the students are getting the proper amount of sleep for both health reasons and educational reasons. I think what has always come back were the two things. One was there is a cost to it because of the busing. And I think what happens is, is that we get the surveys back and we start to talk about the cost because of busing and because of scheduling and so forth. And we don't, we've never gone beyond there in those two times. The other factor is that of after-school activities, mostly athletics. Because if we buy into this and nobody else buys into this, it's an adjustment again on those scheduling. Those were the two things that in the last two attempts were not conquered in discussion. And again, I think if answers came back with those, you need the survey first and then I think there has to be a strong discussion with administration, including the athletic director, of how this could accommodate the students. Because it was called, it's been, just so people know, in the past, it was called the flip-flop because you were taking elementary and flipping it with high school, basically on the start time.
And I think one of the reasons in looking at it that way is to try and avoid, I think you can do this with... Now, the bus system is complicated, but I've spoken with Peter Torry, you know, back when I first started looking at this. There's a lot of different possibilities. Flip-flop is one of them. There's any number of possibilities, which I don't want to put forth any one over another until we have the data, you know. And that's one of the things, when Nancy Clayberg was working with us on this, you know, she'd really wanted the survey and we've really taken, there's some great survey tools out there, which is why we've taken the time to find one that we thought could work and create one that worked well for our district. I'm really looking forward to the information. It is a big process and it's one of the reasons we've looked at it systemically versus just, you know, wouldn't it be great if we could go a little later for these guys? You know, it doesn't work that way.
And I'm just saying, the only thing that's ever killed it, because I think it had legs. I think Arthur and Joe Ornstein, when they presented, had strong survey, strong study with those two subjects. I know that those are the two things that just never really got answered and whether it's administration didn't get back to it or whether there wasn't a follow-up onto it, that's what seems to kill it because again, we want the best outcome for our students. And somehow, we put those two hurdles in front.
And one of the nice things too in waiting is the number of schools, you know, around the country nationwide that have addressed this issue, it kind of makes it so we don't have to recreate, you know, the wheel. There's a number of solutions I think that would work for Portsmouth in different manners. And if this is something we choose to go forward with, picking, you know, what is the best situation? How do we best, you know, tweak that for working? And you look at something like all the kindergarten, we saw the value in doing that and were able to figure out the, you know, the hurdles, and there were hurdles. And I think that, you know, there definitely are things that have to be addressed. And those actually aren't the only two, there's a number of them. But in really addressing the knowing that, okay, we're going to have to find some solutions, I think you can start soliciting, how can we best do this? And we did meet early on with Dr. Lister and the other administrators in the area and I think it was pretty positive, the feedback. In the past, when this has been, I think we're in a different place. And I think it may be at different times and for families and demographically in this area, looking at what are the needs with after-school care, after-school sports, the busing. I think there's a lot of potentially things that, you know, just looking at the bus routes in general that we could find maybe some possible benefits from.
I have Sherry and then Lisa.
The survey, the student-parent, is it going out to all schools?
It's going to be hitting the all three elementary schools and it will also go to the middle school and the high school for all students. Well, all students, fourth grade and up. So the elementary schools, fourth and fifth grade, and all middle school and high school students. It will go to all parents district-wide for those five. We hadn't put into address at pass because they have their own time schedule. But, you know, in looking at bus schedules, anything that we bus to as well as anywhere in the area that they're bussed to, in fact, would have to look, and also the other SAUs as well.
So how are these getting passed out? Are they getting mailed in people's mail or are they being sent home with students through school?
They are going to be sent home through students with school. I'm also electronically copying for the schools that have a database to send home. I know that in middle school, the almighty locker is a big loss of communication with parents and we've had great success using email. And I have electronic version that will go out to be returned, one per family. And the surveys are set up so that the information, if you have more than one student in the district, one survey can accommodate that. I know parents are busy and filling out five surveys is not necessarily a great use of time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I would imagine, is the committee going to look at other districts? Because I would imagine if we've looked at it three times now, other districts have as well, so...
Yep, conquered in the area, they've gone to a later start time for their middle school and high school. And there's a number of places, you know, nearby that have taken a look at this.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that the survey is going to the parents of SAU 50, Rye, Greenland, Newington, Newcastle.
Mr. Chairman, I think that you would need to talk to Dr. Cushing before we...
Participate.
Participate.
Okay. I just have one quick question. So as this process unfolds, do you have a sense of when you can come back to us and talk to us again?
The big goal for this year really was to have the surveys. So, and I think that we, hopefully accomplishing that and getting it out. And that's going to provide much of the data that we need. I mean, it's hard to propose to get ideas and solutions. It's a lot of information, you know, and collating and getting it all ready. So hopefully when that comes back, we can see at that point that, you know, what are the possibilities and the directions? Some possibilities may take more time than others and that's going to come from the data. You know, something systemic would be a big undertaking versus there may be something that could be done with possibly just a few schools. So I think we need the data from that before we put a timeline in place.
Okay.
But I'm hoping in the next year, I've spent a lot of time with this in a number of years. So I'm really hoping in the next year, we can really figure if this is something that's possible and look at the direction and hopefully give it the time and importance that it needs.
Okay, great. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ann.
Okay, going back into order.
Scholarships.
Thank you. I have two scholarship requests that I have included in your packet from two families in Portsmouth. And I bring those, these applications before you because I'm asking for you to give me permission to sign these and work with the trustee of trust funds in the schools to make this happen. The first is from the Golden Education Fund in recognition of Mrs. Golden's commitment to public education in Portsmouth High School. Many of us remember Mrs. Golden was a substitute teacher and a clerical for many, many years. Kent, many, many, many years.
Oh, yeah, she slapped me a couple of times.
And at Portsmouth High School. And her family, her daughter Susan and her husband, Susan's husband Stephen, has set up this scholarship. And the scholarship will be to fund an annual scholarship awarded to a graduating senior from Portsmouth High School who has been accepted to an institution of higher learning with the intention of becoming a teacher. The first scholarship will be $500 and then they'll work up the trust funds from there. The second is...
Can we make a motion on the first one?
Do you want it to...
Make a motion that the Mrs. Golden's scholarship be accepted by the Portsmouth School Board and so moved to the trustees of the trust fund.
Okay, any discussion? Yes.
As Bob indicated, you had to know Mrs. Golden. She was a fixture of the school system and a unique person and for a number of years, my backdoor neighbor. And it's nice to see her being remembered tonight. Again, we've had so, we're a very fortunate community that looks out for our students beyond the years that they graduate. And I thank Susan, her daughter, and family for looking out for the students beyond her life on this earth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The second is a trust fund created to be known as the Harold and Ruth Whitehouse Scholarship Fund in recognition of their commitment to public education and to Portsmouth High School. The purpose of this trust fund will be to fund an annual scholarship to be awarded to a graduating senior from Portsmouth High School who has been accepted to any form of post-high school education, including but not limited to vocational school, a technical school, or a college or university. school, or a college or university. That scholarship, the first scholarship to be awarded, will also be $500. And Mr. and Mrs. Whitehouse are well-known to many of us. Mr. Whitehouse is former city councillor, former school board member, and is very active in the Portsmouth community. He and his wife can be seen at many different events, and we really appreciate them offering these scholarships, this scholarship to Portsmouth High School students.
Entertained a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
So, Dr. Lister, will those go into this booklet?
They will go in the scholarship booklet, I'll take these and...
We have a lot of scholarships.
And again, I've said this many times, especially around graduation time, our students in Portsmouth are very fortunate with the number of scholarships available to them, and you will find it when we have the graduation at the high school. On June 13th, when Vice Chair Restano reads the scholarships, you'll find that our students have access to thousands and thousands of dollars worth of scholarships because of the people in the community and businesses, and the banks, and everyone else, and we really appreciate that. Our kids are very fortunate here.
Stephen, Mr. Zadriek. Yes?
We still have item B under D there.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you.
Just like, first of all, I want to thank you on item A earlier tonight, recognizing Patty, and I also want to take this time to thank Mama Dee's last week for doing the first fundraiser towards it. They was an outstanding...Bob the Bus Boy did an outstanding job of wiping tables, better than me.
Great picture.
In 1993, 94, the Portsmouth Athletic Fields were completed, totally renovated. In 1996, we did a dedication ceremony. In the time in between, there have been a total of five field-type of dedications, which are the Tom Dobney Field, the Mike Grogan Track, Kyle Colius End Zone, and three others, or two others, I'm sorry, and also including, in 1996, a stone was to be erected, reading, "All are welcome to the Portsmouth City Athletic Complex." This stone has not been done, funding was done at that time at about $1,000. We have a stone that has been requested to be put in place. This stone would be between the Athletic Building and the Old Snack Shack, which I believe is going to be torn down this summer, or partially torn down. This is a very eyesore area as you first come into the Athletic Complex. This stone has a cost of around $1,200. Again, there was funding that was put off to the side. I briefly talked to Steve Bartlett about it, and I haven't had total research on it. It is time to do this, because the number of plaques and so forth, because it would be one central location, such as Tom Dobney Field, such as Kyle Colius End Zone, and the Mike Grogan Track, would have allowed plaques on this. And again, it's a chance to thank those that participate in the community above and beyond. So, this is informational, that this stone is in...is in the making, with this being chiseled in. Again, it's a delay since 1996, basically because there was nowhere to put it, because we knew the renovation of the high school was going to happen, and it was put off for that time period because of discussion of the new high school, not knowing what would happen with the old Athletic Building. Everybody has to imagine, that whole field area got totally changed after the Athletic Building was torn down, which is now your principal's office. And so, there's a little bit of change. So, we're informing you that this is about to happen. There is not anything planned for a formal dedication, although I believe during the fall season, there may be, once again, the whole area has been cleaned up. So, again, this is informational, trying to keep people abreast, but again, all of a sudden, people had asked, where is this and why hasn't it been done? And going back and looking for it in 96, under Chairman Charlie Griffin at that time, we appropriated a working relationship to have this done in some time period, and then it got delayed due to the new high school. It's informational. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Zadriek.
Okay, adequate yearly progress, or better known as AYP. If you remember back, earlier in the year, we came to you with a report on how our students did on the October 2007 kneecap assessments in reading, math, and writing. And as you recall, those assessments are given in each grade level three through eight, and this year, we also were able to assess students in grade 11. We were able to report to you when those assessment results came out, that our students made substantial gains on their scores in all of those areas, and some very impressive gains in areas that we've put considerable emphasis as a district, literacy, for example. And what the state does in between the time they release the student-level results that we looked at and the time of this week, is they go through a series of calculations that is heavily driven by the No Child Left Behind requirements, that requires the state to identify schools and districts by making or not making adequate yearly progress. The adequate yearly progress designation is really based upon three things. One is that a certain percentage of students have to take the test. The other is that the students taking the test have to reach a certain target, called an annual measurable objective. And also, there's one other indicator, and at the elementary level, that indicator is attendance rate, and at the high school, that indicator is graduation rate. Then, all of those things are applied to various subgroups. Of course, the spirit of No Child Left Behind is that you're not just looking at the whole population, but you're looking at individual subgroups and identifying subgroups that are making or not making progress. Those subgroups include a variety of ethnic groups, as well as educational disability, our special ed population, economically disadvantaged students, as well as non-or-limited English proficient students. So, we end up with quite a variety of indicators, in fact, over 100 different boxes. And what I included in your packet this evening was, were some of the state-level reports, and I didn't include them for you to actually have to digest all of this data in one night, don't worry. But I wanted you to scan it more than anything, and to look at just the variety of boxes of indicators that go into this designation. And it's important to note that out of over 100 of these indicators, we have over 100 of these indicators saying, yes, we're making progress in all of these subgroups. Of course, the great challenge with No Child Left Behind and adequate yearly progress is that even if one, even if one subgroup is not making progress as determined by the calculations, then the whole school or district is determined as not making adequate yearly progress. So, what I'd like to do is just give you an overview report of how the schools made out with that. But again, I think it's important to note and good to keep in perspective the gains that our students made in those assessments, due to the hard work of the teachers and the commitment of the students as well. We really saw some tremendous performance that we've been able to look at and already identify strengths and areas we want to focus on. But the way things worked out with adequate yearly progress, in terms of the district first, if you recall, our district had been labeled a district in need of improvement two years ago in the area of reading. And that's because the district is broken into two sections. High school is one section, and everything else is the other. And you have to make adequate yearly progress in at least one of those two sections to make it as a district. And two years ago, we were labeled a district in need of improvement, because we had failed to make that progress for two years. Then, last year, we did make adequate yearly progress as a district, and so, we were certainly hopeful that this year, if we were able to make adequate yearly progress again, we would no longer be carrying the label district in need of improvement. Unfortunately, we did not make adequate yearly progress as a district. One of our subgroups did not, a couple of our subgroups did not make it, and therefore, we will continue on being a district in need of improvement for at least two more years, because it takes two years to make progress to remove that designation. But we've talked to you before about the plans that we put into place around that. We've talked to you about our work in the area of literacy. We've talked about our work around teachers collaboratively defining what are the most essential things for students to know in that area, about developing assessments that help us know where students are with that, and about collaborating to find new strategies and new interventions. And that work has been tremendous this year. We certainly, you know, have seen wonderful change in our practice around collaboration and working together to meet the needs of kids. And so, we have that plan in place. It's our district in need of improvement plan, but more importantly, it's the vision for our district and how we want to collaborate with each other and work towards the needs of kids. So, the district will move on. The district did make adequate yearly progress in the area of math, which is the other area that is determined, so we, again, have no district designation in the area of math. And again, we don't want to fall into the trap either of assuming math then is fine, because it's not. We want to focus on math, we know that we have, we want to improve our performance with math on a variety of indicators, and so, we're really focusing on that. In fact, this summer, we are going to bring a group of teachers together in a similar way that we did around literacy, to collaborate around meeting the needs of students with math. In terms of individual schools, we had our three elementary schools, Dondero made adequate yearly progress in all of those subgroups, Little Harbor as well, New Franklin, the one subgroup did not make adequate yearly progress in the area of math. This is the second year. Although oddly enough, every subgroup that didn't make it last year, made it this year. It doesn't matter if you switch subgroups that don't make it, if you miss it in math, you miss it in math. So, while many of our, in fact, all of our subgroups that didn't make adequate yearly progress last year across the district, made it this year, but other subgroups popped up as not making it. So, New Franklin will enter the status of a school in need of improvement and have to develop a plan to address that issue. Ironically, New Franklin improved more than the other two elementary schools when you look at the whole population and the scores that they had for math. So, you know, again, it's not, there certainly is a fair amount of caution when we start throwing terminology around. The high school, you recall the high school, this is the first year that we've had high school results come out, so this is the first year and a couple that we've had AYP for the high school. And while our high school performed certainly in the top tier of the state along the whole population, we did have a subgroup that did not make adequate yearly progress in both reading and math. That does not mean it's a school in need of improvement, because you have to miss it two years in a row. So, we certainly will be looking at the newly released results with the high school and continuing to work with those to focus our areas and efforts. So, that's an update of where we are with adequate yearly progress, and our work certainly is, has been in earnest this year around just defining what we want our students to know and finding ways to better measure it ourselves, and really staying true to what we value in student learning. And as we've seen gains, we certainly expect to see even greater gains as we go forward.
Thank you for that report. Any questions? Any comments? It's getting late. Okay, moving on. We're going to hold off on the quality index, the tech virtual high school going into campus. I was just going to report on a conversation I had with Susan Burrell, but I'll do that at another meeting. If we could go to committee reports. I can...Stephen, do you want to say something about technology, or?
If you want to.
Just a quick update. Susan Burrell has been doing a good job trying to get a group of people together to look at the, creating a new technology plan, a vision plan. I think one thing important to remember is that we, you know, we have a plan for technology. It's been in place, it's, I think it's every three years that we do want to file it with the state. And so, there's like two parts, two things going on here, I think. One is that we need to update that plan, so we actually get something into the state, because some money, some technology money is actually dependent upon having a plan filed with the state. But at the same time, I think we're also having a pretty, beginning to have a good conversation about what the technology vision for the district might look like, or will look like. And so, that's something that Susan has started. She's sent out a distribution list to people on the committee, and she's calling, let's see, when is it? I think next week is a technology committee meeting where she's actually asking all the principals to attend, so we can have some broad conversation and good interaction about looking towards the future. Yes, Dexter?
And, Mr. Chair, that's specifically to focus on one of the board objectives of integrating technology?
It's one of the board objectives about coming up with a big strategic vision for, yes, for technology. Yes, Sherri.
And this plan has to be in by when to the state?
Actually, I mean, there is a date, and it's usually the end of the fiscal year, something around there, but I've talked to Susan about this a couple of times, and correct me if I'm wrong, the state is perfectly, I'll speak for the state. The state is perfectly okay with offering, you know, some extensions on this, so, over the course of the summer. So, we're really looking at the summer to do the substantial work and file it probably late summer, early fall.
So, will that be the same plan that we use as our five-year technology plan?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
It will be. So, and the conversation is getting pretty exciting. Okay, Special Ed Task Force report. Who's speaking on that this evening?
I'm actually sure it is.
Who's speaking?
Sure.
Okay.
We've had one meeting so far, and the point of the Special Ed Task Force was to begin a productive dialogue about special education in our district, and to inform ourselves and the greater community about really the needs that drive the services, you know, how we deliver the services, to talk a little bit about the costs and a little bit about the funding, so that we can understand that better and possibly some future directions. You know, there's a lot, you know, it's a big, big topic that I think we'll have to wrestle down, you know, as a group. We discuss the value of people in the program, the collaboration and coordination of services between sped and regular ed. And I guess what I would love to have kind of from my fellow board members, because this came out of our workshop or whatever, our retreat, was, you know, what is it that you want this committee to articulate and discuss? Because it is a very big discussion, and I want to kind of take that back to the task force, so.
When is your next meeting?
June 17.
Seventeenth.
June 17. So, you know, I'll take your input, one-way input.
Good job.
I just have a quick question, if no...do people on the task force feel that the membership of the task force is made up of the right people? Are there other people who could or should be invited? Are the other SAU representatives for special ed, or is that not necessary? I mean, I don't know. I'm just sort of thinking out loud.
We have Mary Lyons and Dr. Cushing, who are willing to sit in some of the meetings. We've spoken to them. Right now, we're trying to add some elementary classroom teachers, and maybe another elementary special ed teacher, but we also have, in addition, Elisa representing the school board. Councilor Dwyer from the city council, she's sat with us at the first meeting, and I think everyone's contributing in a very positive way, so it's great.
So, Mary Lyons and Dr...have they officially been invited, or are you just saying that...
Yes, no, they know about our meeting, so they didn't want to come to the first couple of meetings, but they will be joining us later.
Okay. Great. Sherri.
Did you send out a letter to our government officials?
Yes.
In some way, shape, or form, and have you heard back from?
You know, I haven't. I sent, the first letter I sent to Representative Carol Shay Porter, I haven't heard anything from her. I'm a little disappointed, because she was, we've met with her once, when she came to the district and talked a lot about special ed. I'm hoping that she's just waiting to hear from us about our, about the status of the task force, but we've also sent letters... But we've also sent letters to other politicians as well, and hopefully, we're going to, once we get organized and we're moving along here and we've identified the areas that we want to talk about, we would like to have some sit downs with them and move forward. And I said this before the meeting, that there are other districts that wish they were doing this and are not. So this is really a good thing for us to do.
Excellent. Thank you.
Student conduct and extracurricular activities policies.
I'm passing this off to Dr. Lister.
Well, in your packet. Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you, Dr. Lister.
In your packet, you have copies of the student conduct policy. Tonight, if you don't have any questions, we are offering the second reading of that policy. If we need to postpone that to the next meeting, we can if there are any questions or concerns. But we we do want to finish talking about that and getting, so we can get that in the student handbook for all the schools for August. And Abby was very involved in that as well, Abby Rockefeller, so she may be able to answer some questions as well.
Kent.
Just, I mean, I'll support this. It's a referral type question that I had on this, is that after the disciplinary committee has made this determination, there's nowhere in here that indicates, which is true of any disciplinary action, that that student slash parents would have the right to inquire for a board hearing. Is that correct? Can you ask Kathleen on that? I believe she, I believe the parent is correct in that, that as much as this is level one, if somebody felt really unjust, and I would hope it would be really unjust, that they would have the right to appeal. I believe they may be right, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the student conduct policy, item 6C.
Second.
Any kind, any discussions? Yeah, Lisa.
Does this, by like the supervision piece of it, on that second paragraph, it says supervision, all activities conducted in the name of Portsmouth School Department shall be under the supervision of school authorities? Is that what our juris, is that how we're defining our jurisdiction? So it's during school, this policy applies to school grounds and activities, the policy?
I'm not sure it's necessarily just grounds.
Well, not, I mean, but or activities somewhere else, but it's a school activity, so it takes.
Right. School sanctioned.
Yeah.
Summer piece and all of that.
So it could be anywhere. It could be on a bus halfway across the state.
But it would have to be a school bus.
School sanctioned.
Well, school sanctioned activity.
Right, okay. Okay.
I have, yeah, yes. Brendan.
For any member of the policy committee, some some questions I had, is there a statute of limitation on the penalty, meaning if if a student in their freshman year, and I know you've had these discussions because on the athletic committee, but they smoke a cigarette, they get caught, no tobacco, okay. You go to the first offense and they say, well, I'm not, that's going to deter me from playing anything or doing anything. And then their senior year, they decide, hey, you know what, I feel like playing baseball. Do they then serve the penalty? Is there any statute of limitation on the penalty for the student, or is it, hey, you know, when you decide to take part in it is when you receive your punishment?
It has been discussed. If you have a first offense your freshman year and you are playing an activity or doing anything that year, you will suffer some sort of consequence by the committee within that year. But after that 12 months is up, I believe if you start following after that 12-month period is up and you do something wrong again, it would be your first offense again after the 12-month period.
What, getting at is fall of freshman year, an infraction occurs.
Okay.
And the student doesn't do an activity till the spring and decides, I'm not going to do the activity in the spring because I'm going to miss X amount of time. And they said, okay, maybe junior year, I decided to do the activity in the spring. Does that constitute as the penalty in the 12 months, or is it?
No, because the committee would have already met and come up with some sort of something. And I hate, we're not supposed to use the word punishment or discipline.
Consequence.
Consequence, thank you, for your actions. So therefore, it could be community, it could be something, but you will have something decided by the committee.
So not being involved in anything and then deciding to get involved will then?
Two years later.
Will then trigger your consequence.
No, your consequence will be dealt with when the offense happens.
And then my, my other question is, is say a student, again, is not involved in the beginning of the year, but is involved in a spring activity, to trigger their penalty, so say they play baseball, but instead of getting penalty for baseball, they decide to do winter track, so to speak, to serve their penalty. Is that, again, one of those? Can you, because in the athletic committee, we discussed this, we debated this back, you know, they're a baseball player, but they decide to play basketball so they can take their, you know, four-game suspension instead of during baseball season.
Once, once they have served, once the the conduct committee has met, that is the one year. Everything is a clean slate after the 12, the day after the 12 months is served. So it would be that whether they chose to do anything in between is a moot point because...
Well, it's up to 12 months.
That's correct. The athletic director and/or could.
They can do, hey.
But that's on the severity of the.
They can say two months, but instead of saying, hey, instead of two months of baseball, I'd rather take two months of basketball.
No, it's immediately after, from what I I understand, is that once they've met, it's an immediate timeframe.
So if that activity comes up next, and that's the one you're signed up for, and that's the one you want to play supposedly, then that is the one you will suffer. Your consequences and...
Lisa and Rebecca.
So, if you're a freshman and you get in trouble, say, the beginning of the year, and no one knows whether you do anything in the spring, then you would be, you might go before the committee and they would hand out a consequence that was appropriate and timely. But then, say if you were a sophomore and everybody knows you played baseball last year and you're probably going to sign up this year, how is that, does that have a different sort of consequence?
The committee is going to address everything within the timeframe that you are playing whatever it is you're playing or doing, or whatever it is you're signed up to do next. So as soon as you have something you've done wrong and the committee meets, you you will get your consequences as soon as possible.
Okay.
So that's your first offense, that's what you did, that's what the committee decided.
So the consequences will be timely and appropriate, and say if you, six months ago...
Six months ago, if you did something, you've already served your time for whatever your consequences are before you sign up for your next activity.
So if you're actually not in season, you'll be treated as any other student would.
You go to the assistant principal's office and take the consequence.
Exactly. Okay, so, because I don't know why, but I guess people that I've talked to are concerned about sort of holdover.
There's nothing being held over by the committee, the disciplinary committee.
So just because you're involved in sports doesn't mean they're going to wait until you...
Your next activity six months from now to say, no, six months from now, we're going to bench you for the first three games.
Okay, good.
No.
Thank you for that clarification.
Rebecca.
Is there any sort of provision that the disciplinary committee, if it's the star of the drama show or the head football player?
Yes.
Can they, okay, would you explain, please?
Absolutely. If that affects many people. Drama, and you need...
You're the lead.
You're the lead in the play, then the drama coach is not part of your committee to suffer your consequences. So he doesn't get to say what happens to you. And if you're the basketball star player, then the basketball coach is not deciding what happens to you on the committee.
But could you, as a committee, then say, well, the lead in the fall play affects everything, including finances, therefore you will hold off your consequence until after the show?
No.
No. No.
You guys are, you have to understand that you need to put your faith in this disciplinary committee, that these faculty are, you know, A, our athletic director, to deal with all of athletics, are either assistant principal or the student council advisory faculty, you know, person will deal with like the co-curriculars. So these people have to make very good decisions for everybody involved in all of these activities that will happen when the instance occurs, in a timely fashion.
Rebecca, I'll take all the, I'm sorry, I created the disciplinary committee, so.
This disciplinary committee has so far, is my understanding with athletics, has done a wonderful job, and there has, so just broaden your horizons and let it cover two that, or however many kids, 5,000.
Can I, can I kind of answer that? Because the reason we did create this committee was to take the politics out of the decision-making, and it has absolutely worked that.
It's worked wonderfully according to everybody.
If you're the star football player or if you're the...
But can it be looked at then?
If you're the water boy.
I mean, can it be looked at if you're the lead and there is no understudy? I mean, will...
That doesn't matter.
You're out, you're done, and everybody...
The purpose of this was to create equality for everyone, because before extracurriculars and band was excluded, and the people who played sports were punished always.
Right.
This was to make it equal for everyone, and if you're the lead in the show, then you have an understudy, and if you're the lead point guard on the basketball team, then the JV boy gets pulled up.
Okay.
And can I also add, this is a lot about prevention, too, involving the kids, and that's why, you know, Abby was involved in this, but a lot of the about, a lot of this is about setting the tone of what the expected behaviors for kids in the school might be. And so that's why it's been pretty successful with the athletic people, but there's also a tone set with the school that kids are going to not want to be in this situation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just had one other quick question.
Are you still on your quick question?
I'm on my, yeah, well, yeah, it was the answers that were long. So there's the extracurricular policy, and then there's the student conduct. These are two separate.
That's a good point.
And so if you misbehave and you're not involved in any extracurricular because you just don't, in theory, you would never receive a punishment?
No.
I mean, a consequence?
No.
Policy is the extracurricular.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. We don't have the conduct. This is just...
It's a little confusing, because we don't really have the conduct, or do we have the conduct?
Yeah.
Policy. It's like a letter here.
It's a little confused as to how equality happens.
Because there are those kids who do, don't do school-sponsored extracurricular, but do other extracurriculars, so.
Give me an example. What's the other?
Doing a play at Seacoast Rep instead of the Portsmouth Drama Department.
Then that's the Seacoast Rep. That has nothing to do with that as a school.
No, so my, so my question is, they're caught smoking on school grounds, what happens?
Whatever happens in their agenda book for consequences for smoking on school grounds. Why any of disciplinary, other ones in the agenda book to cover everything?
I don't understand that.
Yeah, I want to go back to Lisa's question, because there is, there is a, there is a stipulation, I think, also that needs to go back to Kathleen Dwyer. If there is a drinking party this weekend in Portsmouth, the Portsmouth Police Department has worked extremely well with the principal and the athletic director, letting know that there were underage students that were drinking. Those students are not eligible, I am hoping, under this contract, because they were drinking in, this has been a past practice, that is not eliminated. Is that correct?
They're being held responsible under the athletic contract that we have, not this yet, because we haven't.
Right, but they would be held.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
Are they held respons, uh...
Under this, they would be.
Not, not this, if this, well, no, because this wouldn't take place until, it hasn't taken place yet.
All right, but time shifted.
But that's what I want to make sure. If this goes into place, we have a drinking party this coming weekend, and this this was in place, those students that were arrested for underage drinking and/or drinking and driving, would they be eligible to be participating?
It is my belief that the committee would like this to start at the beginning of the next school year, so we can publicize it, let parents know about that, put it in the student handbook, so they would not be covered under this.
But if I could follow your question up with, if this, we're, say, we're in next next fall, and this has passed, and this is all set, now will Kent's question be covered under this policy when it's in effect?
Yes.
So students who drink or misbehave or arrested and are reported back to the Portsmouth School Department outside of a school activity because they have broken the law?
Yes.
Will not be eligible for whatever consequences are dealt them by the conduct committee. Is that correct?
Say that again, Kent.
If the conduct committee would would meet with these students that broke the law?
That's correct, yes.
And they would have punishments sanctioned against them?
That's right.
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're covered.
Okay, this would be only if they were drinking. At our committee meeting, it was brought up rather strongly that the fact that kids really want to play their sport, they may have been at a party, they were not drinking. They took a breathalyzer and it was zero-zero. And they specifically said, I'm going to play my sport. They were at a party, but they were not drinking. And it was a really big deterrent, over and over and over. I was pleased to hear that.
Where in, where the last policy we had, remember, said in the presence of alcohol?
So if their friend wants to, fine, but if they decide not to?
Okay.
All right. So then, if, say, a year from now, this weekend, there was some kind of a drinking thing, and they were arrested or whatever, and they are currently playing baseball, then there would be an immediate consequence. They would lose whatever it is that they would lose, they would have to deal with the legal system, and they'd have to deal with their parents.
Right.
If they were drinking with people who don't do anything except play basketball, then with the basketball players, then they would clearly get a consequence from the committee, maybe community service or something, and then they would get the legal consequences, parental consequences. But then, once basketball season came, they should be set for having already served their consequences?
They will, they will have served their, they will have had their consequence.
They will have had some kind of consequence, so you're not going to hold over for some number of months.
The intention isn't to hold a consequence until then.
Timely.
Because it should happen right away. I mean, any, any consequence for any negative behavior is only effective if it's dealt with right away.
Right, I agree.
Not waiting any time, I mean...
But it could go for, let's say that, so the committee could decide that the consequence is actually for a year, for 12 months. So if it happens in November, it could be, it could impact them the next year as a sophomore or a junior, up until 12 months from that particular date.
That's up to the committee.
That's up to the committee. So, I mean, not a holdover, but the length of consequence could be up to a year.
But you're not giving them two consequences, it's the same consequence.
No, no, it's 12 months. But I do have one quick question.
Really, this is a quick question?
Only, only if you give them a quick answer.
I'm ready to like have us not pass this, and and I would be happy to have Kathleen come back at the 27th to see if she can finally wrap this up for you all, to get past a second reading, because I really think we're past it tonight, and it's just not going to happen.
Okay, but my question is, in terms of behavior and consequence, if a person does more than one extracurricular activity?
Okay.
They're on two teams, and they're involved in chorus, and they do something, does it, is it only single sport specific, or would it impact their whole extracurricular activities after school for whatever length of consequence?
I would say it's up to the committee.
I would say it's up to the committee.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I'm sorry. I, I want to go back. I mean, there are circumstances where I keep hearing about students that don't participate. We have both junior and senior prom coming up, we have graduation coming up, and it has happened to this board, unfortunately, that consequences can be dealt with. Let's say there's a drinking party this weekend, this committee would be enacted a year from now, that they may not, and they may not have ever participated in any sports or any activities, but they may not be able to participate in graduation when that committee meets. Is that correct, Bob?
It's a consequence.
Because it's a consequence of that. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, now this, I mean, these are the things, I think, yes, Kathleen should come back.
Okay, Dexter and then Lisa.
So is, can I make a motion that we accept this in second reading? Can you accept the motion?
The motion's been made.
We have to table it.
Yeah, I would, yeah, that's, so it's on the table, so we have to either vote it off, vote it down, or table it for another time.
Table it till we...
So we can have Kathleen come.
Table it as a nightmare. No, then we just vote to take it off the table.
Okay.
So wait, Lisa?
So what happens if we, but if we approve, this is a second reading, so what happens?
It becomes policy.
It becomes policy.
And I don't think we're ready for policy. Yeah.
How many readings do you have, Mr. Chair?
Two.
Two. And then what, and then it's a-
And then it's in.
It's a done deal.
So, I mean, basically, I would say two things. It's a little confusing, because on the, on the agenda, it says student conduct and extracurricular activities. And I see extracurricular activities policy, and then the first page, which is a little confusing, it's not really a student conduct policy, it's like a letter.
I don't understand why you got that.
So that's really not ready to be voted on.
So, Mr. Chairman, could I make the recommendation that this Friday, we have a policy committee at 4:00. We will meet, we will talk about this, and we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and try and clear up all these questions, and make sure we have the paperwork that we need, and, because, well, once we do the second reading, we want to put this in the student handbook, so then it's a done deal.
We want to make sure it's right.
So we want to make sure everyone's satisfied with this.
So if I could ask the-
And everybody just vote no, and just have it not pass, and then we just do the second reading?
No, no, because if you do that, you have to go a whole year.
So if I could ask a person who, who made the motion-
I'll table the motion, because I made the motion, I'll, I'll ask for a table.
Till next meeting.
Till the next meeting, time definite.
Who seconded it? You did, is that okay with you two? You agree?
No, I didn't second it when it came up originally. You're looking for the original.
Who seconded that motion?
Originally?
The one that he just made this evening.
The one he's removing.
The one he made this evening.
The one he's tabling.
Did I?
Okay. Do you agree to, do you agree to table?
I don't have to move things in here.
You agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we'll do this-
All in favor?
All, okay.
All aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
To remove the motion.
No, table the motion.
Table it to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anything else under committee reports?
Just real quickly.
Yes.
The Portsmouth Rec Board is requesting, in a letter from Carl Deemer and Russ Wilton, will be coming forward to have a work session in regards to field uses between the school and the athletic department. So they would like to meet sometime this summer, just for a brief, one hour work session about what they see future needs and so forth.
That'd be good.
Excellent.
So the letter will come, and we'll try to coordinate it in the next three months.
Okay, that'd be great. Ann, you have something? Ann Mayer?
Mr. Chair, at the next meeting, could we get a, a full copy of that student conduct policy, other than-
Yes. Yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
Is it online?
No.
No, it only goes online when it's totally done and-
I think we have an old copy in our papers, but it could be back, I don't know how many revisions that was.
Right. Could I just ask the board, you know, last year, we had, when we did policies, they had it set up, we had the old policy and the new policy. Is that something, a format, that we could continue? Because it sort of helped-
Would be easier.
The, the-
That was Patty.
But these are two new policies, right?
Okay.
One of these is brand new.
Is that something we could still request?
See if we can resurrect this.
Okay, we'll see if we can do that, because it's helpful to have them both.
Do you think you want to have a comparison with the athletic contract?
Right.
That's a good idea, too.
That's the one you're comparing it to.
Yep.
Okay, great. All right, so, just to quickly go over some things for next agenda, if there's nothing else under committee reports, you want to look through some of this?
Just very quickly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ben Franklin, I want to let you know what the status of Ben is. We'll talk about that next time.
He's still dead.
The second is history of graduation. Brendan Rustano had asked about a report. I asked about doing this in May 27th, because we also want to report on the class of 2008, and maybe tell you about some things about them as well, where they go to school, and give you some information about that, because that'll be close to graduation. You're all invited to the Futures BBQ at Fort Tree Island on June 3rd at 5, I think it's 5:00. And that's, I think I put in my notes with the time and what to bring, a sweater, a chair, and bug repellent. But it's, it's good, the other Futures kids usually get together, and we have a cookout, and it's just fun.
There's a mail on that, will we?
Yeah. That was a former email, okay? A former email. The PHS tour of the CTE Center, we had scheduled for 6:00 on the 27th, but it's, between 6:00 and 7:00 at the high school, we will have the retirees' reception. So would you like to take the tour, starting at 5:30, or save it till another night?
People want to meet at 5:30 and take the tour, or save it for another night? I'd say save it for another night.
I'd say save it with all the overwhelming people.
Okay, okay. We'll do it another night. And we will have the retirees' reception, as I said, from 6:00 to 7:00, and then recognize the retirees during the regular agenda. The last item here is the discussion of June 10th, 2008 board meeting, and the reason that's there is because Dr. Shulman and I had a meeting with J CJ, and they're scheduled to, to make sure I get this right, they're scheduled to meet with us-
No, they're scheduled for the community-
For the community meeting.
Workshop.
Community workshop.
Evening.
From 7:00 to 9:00. We were wondering, instead of changing the date from June 10th to something else, about having a meeting from 9:00 to 10:00 with an abbreviated schedule.
I'm confused.
Or 6 to-
Okay.
How about 6 to 7?
Um, yeah. Hang on one second. You're confused because-
I'm confused because the last time we got this, you guys switched the timeframes and said that one was starting at 3:30.
We said we would check into switching it because of the potential conflict.
Right, that's the right time.
We were unable to change it, but unfortunately-
So it was really supposed to be 7.
It was really supposed to be 7, and 3:30 in the afternoon the day before, and 7:00-
So those are correct.
Those are correct. It's a little odd. But it had to do with their schedule-
Okay.
And the city coun, yeah, and the city council's schedule for the room.
Okay, so those are correct, so now we want to know what to do about our meeting.
Yeah. I mean, the other option is to change the date of our meeting.
J CJ.
Or J, or Brendan's suggestion that we have a very quick, brief meeting between 6:00 and 7:00.
Well, I would go with 6:00 to 7:00 instead of 9:00 to 10:00.
We're not as affected.
9:00 to 10:00.
6 to 7. You didn't have any conflict with, with that at all?
And that can be here. The workshops here.
Here, at 7:00. So as long as we can still be here at 6:00.
So let's see if we can schedule this room from 6:00 to 7:00.